Long meeting. We're calling to order the regular Malibu Planning Commission meeting for September 3rd, This meeting is being held both in a hybrid and format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely on Zoom. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit a request-to-speak to the clerk before the item is started. Only in-person participants may donate time to another person. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join Zoom as printed in the agenda and raise your hand when your item is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make the meeting, our discussion, clear to the public record. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a forum.
Louis, would you read us the Pledge of Allegiance? That doesn't matter. Yeah, you don't have to do.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Approved by acclamation. Can we have a report on posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August 23rd, 2024.
Okay, we have no ceremonial presentations, so we are opening the public comment period. We have two public speakers. Do we have any on Zoom?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, these are four items not on the agenda. First, we have Norm Haney, followed by Joe Drummond.
Commissioners, good evening. I hope you all had a happy holiday. I'm going to make this short. The Los Angeles County Water Department has a plan to eliminate a 70,000-gallon water tank that services all of the homes in Lower Ensnell Canyon. Without this water tank, they will have no firefighting water. The water that they will have is a 5,000-gallon tank to service 50-plus homes for domestic water only. I have a plan, and I'll be bringing it to the Planning Commission with an application that would allow each one of the homeowners and property owners to have their own 25,000-gallon private water tank during the time that their only source of water, which is a 70,000-gallon water tank in Lower Ensnell Canyon, is removed. Now, the Water Department doesn't have to remove that tank in order to build the new one. It's just easier for them to do it, and I haven't been able to turn them around. So the alternative is that each individual homeowner and property owner can have their own water source. In the past, the Fire Department has accepted 25,000 gallons when there is no municipal water available. Well, this is an example of where there will be no municipal water available for fighting fires. When the larger tank, which is 180,000 gallons, has finally been completed within a year, two years, three years, who knows? At that point, they can keep the 25,000 gallon for fighting fires during wildfires. We all know that municipal water tanks are generally empty before the fire even gets to us with a wildfire. So this private water source, whether it's a swimming pool or whether it's individual tanks, I think, is a plus in the right direction. I will bring that application before you within the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much for listening. That's it.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Mazza, Planning Commission. I am here today because I am very pleased that because of our appeal to the Malibu Inn Hotel, that the Planning Department has been recently directed to remain neutral on staff reports and not recommend approval anymore. So that's the proper thing to do. I have noticed this past year or two that the first few pages of a staff report for a CDP for a new construction, they used to list the actual square footage of the surrounding homes in the areas, but now they aren't listing the square footage. That's usually in Table 1 in the first few pages. So residents and commissioners are not aware of the smaller average size of homes, and virtually by not knowing this or listening to the residents telling them what the actual square footage is in the immediate vicinity, the neighborhood standards and character are being changed in neighborhoods over and over again. So this needs to be included in future staff reports, so we are all aware of homes that are doubling and tripling in size. Obviously, it's better to attract families and children for our schools to more affordable homes and not mega mansions constantly being built, and the much larger fire rebuilds for newcomers to Malibu for second or third or investment homes. So please let us know if this can be added to future staff reports.
Okay, nobody else showed up on Zoom?
No, there's still no hands.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing, and Commissioner comments?
I'm glad to see that the Chair and Commissioner Hill have cleared everything up after their little spat last week. I'm glad you're back, Commissioner Hill. Last week, or two weeks ago, that whole thing about the housing element truly was just a formality. That's all it was, a formality. There was nothing for us to do, and my feeling is, is the time that was going to be trying spent talking about it should have been started three years ago. So if it was that much interest, it should have been talked to three years ago, not the night that we're going to make a decision. So we all know what the deal was with that. It's still to deal with it, and it's just moving forward to get signed and go to Sacramento, and that's it.
Yeah, thank you for that. I agree with that comment. I think the chili cook-off is going to need better traffic analysis for next year. I was stuck in a backup on PCH at Cross Creek on Saturday about 3:00 PM, and I don't know if it was related, I guess not, but there was a flashing red at Malibu Plaza where Nicholas Edery used to be with a backup to Moon Shadow. So between those two, I was 45 minutes from Big Rock to Webway. And then parking in Ralph's was also pretty jammed, so I think we need to be looking a little more critically at how that chili cook-off goes next year. Also, recently Lester Tobias made some notes, I think it was to counsel, about how it would be good if neighbors could be informed of developments earlier in the process of applications, and that, especially in the case of a site plan review where neighborhood character is in issue, it would be good if we had some kind of preliminary notice that went out to neighbors that just said, hey, we've got an application in near you, and if, you know, primary view determination might be an option that you might want to consider if you haven't already. And then that way, you know, we could be saving applicants, they might have spent $20,000 by that point rather than getting to a point several years later and $200,000 later where they suddenly get a red flag with a primary view determination from somebody. So maybe there's a way to either send out that earlier card when there's a SPR, or even when we're sending out the regular yellow courtesy notices. Maybe there's two versions, one that, when it is an SPR, that says, by the way, have you considered a PVD. I mean, it's not like we're selling PVDs, but if people are going to want to get them, better that they get them sooner than later. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Drew?
No comments for tonight.
Okay. Couple, Norm, on your application, I don't quite understand. You're actually applying to, for a project. It sounds like these are individual houses, so please talk to staff about whether you go to Public Works or Planning Commission so we don't reroute it. Or I've been trying for years to try to have people like Public Works advise us or Public Safety, that apparently nobody wants to do that. And then, oh, thank you. Then I came home from a trip on Saturday and got warned by KNX News not to go on Coast Highway because it was dead stop, and so I went through the valley, came down Canaan, saved myself, 45 minutes. So I hope people listen to that. I also listened to the highway, Caltrans's idea for our highway, and as far as I'm concerned, if it happens, forget commuting. Get a bike and ride to work if you work, or just retire, but it's not going to work. Let's see here. Then, Joe, yes, we do need sizes of houses on our staff reports, and there's other stuff we do need. As the contract planners get more used to everything and we get some long-term planners will fill in the blanks, hopefully it is necessary to know neighborhood character and standards on our part, or we just have to ask for them to do the right job. And then, let's see here. That's about it. We don't have any public speakers today on Zoom that have been determined by the city through our Freedom of Information Act request that they don't exist as human beings with the same names that they're using. So we're off to the consent items. We'll close. Yes?
No, I was just going to say, in regards to the table that was requested, I was going to ask our interim planning chair why we received those on some applications and not on others. I believe that there's a difference in the ones that we do get it for and the ones that we don't.
I don't have an answer for you right now.
Also, in regards to applications, I think most architects would know to go 1,000 feet around a potential project to look for planning, primary view designations before they even start on a project. So if they're not, they're wasting a lot of time and money.
No, I agree, but apparently it still happens, and I think maybe the distinction is that we get the table when there's a site plan review.
I understand that I was.
Folks, folks, this is becoming a discussion on a topic that's not on the agenda, so.
I think the question is more the clarification for a member of the public that asked a question.
Yes, but one person up here should be talking about the topic, not a back-and-forth between the commissioners.
Remember, you have to be recognized to speak.
Chair?
Yes.
I had another comment, which was on the chili cook-off. I actually attended the event on two different days. I attended the event on Friday evening with my children, and I attended as a chili judge. On Sunday, luckily I did get to avoid the area, I think Saturday was what you mentioned, Craig, and I was told that there was a traffic light that was flashing. When I attended on Friday, I noticed that in the traffic plan that you're referencing, there was a little bit of congestion near Civic Center Way. That was really due to the amount of people that were walking across the highway and pressing the button. That's what I felt like that was fun. There was a lot of people, a lot more people than normal because they had some parking on the opposite side of the highway. But other than that, compared to the year prior, the entry was managed significantly better. It seemed like people that were there were having an amazing time. I also thought that Sunday was, I felt the same way, and actually the ingress and egress to the event itself seemed like it was managed very well, as long as you knew where you had to park. So one day I parked in the parking that was assigned to me, the other day I parked in the general parking, and it was a really easy experience.
Commissioner Smith, did you want to speak?
I just wanted the world to know that I was going to agree with you on something. That was, that was PCH. I agree with you on that, Chair. I agree with you.
Yeah, well, maybe part of the solution would be to direct the traffic around to Webway because I hit the backup at Cross Creek where people are waiting to turn in, and maybe they need to.
Yeah, well, let's not do solutions. Now, I had one more comment, but I'm going to skip it. Okay, Commissioner comments are over. Now we have consent items. Does anybody, does the public calling a consent item?
City manager update?
Oh, I'm very sorry. City planning manager update.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. A few small items. City Council will have a public hearing on September 9th to consider the TUP ordinance available online. Secondly, the, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, the LaChusa Public Access MRCA appeal will be out the Coastal Commission agenda for this Friday, September, or next Friday, September 13th. It'll be held up in Monterey, so if you want a nice vacation for a weekend, head on up. Otherwise, you can see it live on their website and participate. Then finally, the housing element is being scheduled for September 23rd, and that hearing will be before the City Council. Finally, a reminder, and this is not just to this commission, but all, I'm getting an email sent very odd hours of the night, and I think it's lovely that you want to speak to me, but I'd also remind the commission that midnight, 1:00 AM, 10:00 PM, my phone is always on at night. That's because I'm a disaster worker, so if you reach out to me, I listen, I hear it, and I look. So if you can hold your great thoughts till at least the morning, that would be wonderful. Then finally, I want to remind the public and this commission that beginning tonight, you have 31 items to consider over the next four meetings. Think about. Think about that, 31 items over the next four meetings. We pulled our planning back, staff back from anything that isn't a critical need right now in order to focus our activities there. I thank you for any efficiencies you can bring to this process and get through this. That concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. I, I had one question. Craig mentioned parking in the civic center, and I, I've been down there a couple Saturdays and have not been able to find a single parking spot. And I noticed that all the restaurants, COVID's over, it's been over for a year, and all the restaurants are still using parking spaces to, to serve food, which is, and I was wondering if the city is going to enforce that at all, or are we just, is that a permanent situation?
I can look into that and send you all a note.
That'd be great. Okay, the other thing I wanted to announce was we've been doing a lot of work on ADUs and state housing requirements and this and that and the other thing. And fortunately, the Assembly or the Assembly and Senate pulled the bills that would have taken away the special privileges for the coast under the Coastal Commission, fortunately for some people, unfortunately for others. But we are no longer threatened with that for, until the next session, which is a scary thing because I have a friend who is now developing lots in, in Los Angeles, 6,000 square foot lots with 17 apartments on them and no parking, which would be what we would be eligible for if we were in the same boat. Okay, we're now on the consent items. Does anybody have a consent item to pull?
Just had a question about the restaurant comment about Cross Creek. What are the restaurants you're referencing that have all of the seating in the parking spaces? Because I can only think of two. I don't think that all of them are doing that.
Well, it's not just Cross Creek. There's Cross Creek, there's the fish, the oyster place, there's marmalade.
Those are the only two that I'm aware of.
Okay. Until Fred Segal closed, they were doing it.
Got it.
And that's about it there. If you notice up at Canaan and Coast Highway, over half the parking spots are taken by the Italian restaurant. It's reasonably common. And of course, I think if you looked at Nobu, you would find out that there's a lot of outside seating that was not approved that came from that. So it's, it's just in general, when you, when you go to go shopping and you drive six miles from Point Dume and you can't find a parking spot, so you turn around and go home, it's a waste of 12 miles.
So, so in general, the, the question for the staff is, are they going to continue to allow that seating outside, or is it going away? And when is it going away for the said restaurants? Because I, I just, I don't think we can make a general comment that every restaurant down there has that because I don't think that that's the case. I think that there's two that you clearly mentioned.
Well, we don't know about Steve's or some of the others yet.
Okay.
But yes, it's in general a city thing, not just down there. Okay, we have, is this, what is this one? That's 4A. We are pulling item 3B1 and 3B3. 3B1 is, did anybody else pulling anything?
3B2.
3B2. 3B1, 3B2, and 3B3. So we'll do 3B1 first. May we have a quick staff report?
Hi, I'm Alex, the Assistant Planner for 3B1. So I'm here to answer any questions. And then we also have Kevin Poffenbarger, he was the applicant for that project as well, he was ready for any questions.
Okay, Kevin Poffenbarger is the person who pulled 3B1?
I, I believe that he just wanted to be available to respond to questions should the item be pulled by any member of the commissioner public.
Did anybody else pull 3B1? Okay, that closes the hearing in 3B1 unless there's any other comments. Receive and file? Is there consensus? Okay, 3B2. Is that you, Craig?
Yeah, I had some questions on this one.
Okay, can we, do we need a quick staff report?
I don't know that we necessarily need a report, but it would be good to.
Get the planner.
Yeah.
There are no Zoom speakers, correct? On any of these?
Alex, Zoom speakers? I'm sorry, Parker.
There are no raised hands in the Zoom meeting.
I'm sorry, what was that?
There are no raised hands in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, so Craig, first a quick, quick review, and then Craig's got some questions.
Yeah, we don't have a staff report prepared, but yeah, any questions you have, go ahead.
Yeah, so there were some things that were hard for me to understand that it looks like we might be endorsing some bad precedents by approving this. So questions, first, is our voting to accept the report an endorsement of the recommendations and conclusions made by the geologists?
I don't think there's anything to vote on, Ty. It's just a receive and file.
Receive and file, but so implicitly we're saying, to accept this would be to say, yeah, we buy all this.
I don't know, Kellen, what do you think?
No, you're, you're not voting on it. You're just receiving it.
All right, so, okay, so in the, in the geo report, there were some conflicts in the recommendations. On the one hand, they were saying our professional opinion, this is a rough quote, is that the bluff retreat rate is negligible. That could be true. But elsewhere, they're, they say they have problems relating to slope instability, that they need five feet of freeboard to capture the slough off the bluff, which sounds to me like anything but negligible erosion. So their conclusion, and this is, this is the city geologist commenting on what the consultant has said, so there's some issues there. Has, question, has the city ever found a site that was designated a coastal bluff then formally removed it from that status? Because here, they're proposing sort of a novel theory about how this was a coastal bluff, but because they've done some concrete remediation and such on it, it is no longer a coastal bluff. I don't know that we've ever accepted or acknowledged that kind of transformation. Right?
Well, you're not allowed to do that by the coastal act.
Well, I don't believe we made an official determination on whether or not it's a coastal bluff in this application.
During the plan, quote, during the plan check process, we understand that geotechnical staff did not classify the subject's slope as a coastal bluff as it was not included. We acknowledge, however, no, okay, I didn't, I didn't copy this part of the quote, but they said it's no longer a coastal bluff. So I, that just seems like a weird thing for us to just say, okay, fine. Similarly, on that same note, I thought we're not allowed to put soldier piles in a coastal bluff face, nor are we supposed to be doing grading on a coastal bluff. And yet we're, we're accepting both of those things here.
So that project has already been approved with a couple variances for development on, on said bluff, but the, the slope is just being remediated and restored to its original condition, and the piles are just to help stabilize the slope. And again, that was an approved project. This is a receive and file comment to satisfy a condition of approval.
All right, well, I will be, however we break it down, I will be voting no on accepting that and filing it.
Okay, then can we, whoop, excuse me.
May I, yeah, one additional comment.
Please.
The, the process that you look at here is through the building code, not through your zoning codes, those entitlement approvals, but through your building code. Your building code is a ministerial process. It's not subject to review through this entity. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. It's a technical review done by a bunch of engineers and geologists and other people to determine whether international and state standards of the building code have been met.
Granted, and understood. I, I just, I see the geo, city geo saying, acknowledging that there are non-negligible problems and, and going ahead and saying that's fine anyway. And I don't want to sign off on that personally.
This is, this is 3B2, correct?
Yeah.
3B2 was a CDP, and this is a conditional, conditional approval, so it's not governed by the building codes, it's governed by the LIP.
Yeah.
The smittle of the report, yes. That would have been a condition, but the contents of that permit is that ministerial process.
Yeah, just, just for the record, this is one that we, we heard, the full thing, heard the CDP and all talked about it. And what we're getting back now doesn't exactly conform with what, at least what I thought we heard at the time. It suddenly sounds like, oh, this is a little bit more tenuous than we were led to believe.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, 3B3, I noticed that the owner signed the notice, but I am pulling it. I have a disclosure, and that is that I asked Courtney through an email today to answer a couple of questions, which were technical. And the only, we don't need a staff report. The only thing that came back that wasn't answered is that this, this resolution is lacking the requirements of the LIP to have a condition about color on the buildings. And that's covered by, I worked in the siding here. I printed the wrong thing out, but Courtney, could you tell me the siding at 6.5 point something rather? That requires that anything viewed from a public, the six named public roadways be restricted to earth tone colors. And all I'm asking is that we include that in the resolution.
I don't see a problem with that. Can I make a motion to approve this, or can we agree to receive and file it based on that?
Receive and file. Do we have any objections? Well, no, do we have to add it? How does that work?
As a point of clarification, we can add the condition of approval. And it would be a matter of issuing, you'd be directing staff to issue a revised notice of decision, including condition of approval to state the project is visible from scenic roads or public viewing areas, therefore shall incorporate colors and exterior materials that are compatible with the surrounding landscape. And then it has the provisions acceptable colors shall be limited to colors compatible with the surrounding environment, earth tones, including shades of green, brown, and gray with no white or light shades and no bright tones. Colors shall be reviewed and approved by the planning director and clearly indicated on the building plans. The use of highly reflective materials shall be prohibited except for solar energy panels or cells, which shall be placed to minimize significant adverse impacts to public views and to the maximum extent feasible. And all windows shall be comprised of non-glare glass. Does that reflect your motion?
Yes. And I'll second the motion, so can we have a roll call, please?
All right, give me one second. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
What are we talking about here?
There's a requirement of the LIP that you, that houses seen from Coast Highway and five other roads are restricted on the color they may paint their house. They have to be earth tones, and they give an example. It's, it's a condition, it's a section of the LIP building requirements.
Okay, everybody knows that. Why are we spending time with this?
Because the notice of.
It's not in the resolution.
Oh, my God, like, somebody wouldn't catch that. Okay.
Well, we didn't. I caught it.
But it's a waste of time. It's, you guys waste time.
Okay, Mr. Smith, I will repeat what I said last time. We are here because we're required to do certain things by law, and all we do in the Planning Commission is do what we're required to do by law.
Okay, you got it.
And we have an attorney here who tells us what we can't do. Okay?
And then Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I have a request. Can someone turn off the mic? We're getting a little bit of echo up here. The speaker mic there?
Okay, we are now, we are now opening the hearing on item 4A. Conditional development permit number 19-014, lot merger number 23-002, conditional certificate of compliance number 19-011, variance number 19-008, and 19-009. Site plan reviews, review number 19-019, and 23-011. Minor modification number 19-004, and demolition permit number 19-018. And application for a single-family residence, lot merger, and associated development continued from August 19, 2024. Location is 27061 Sea Vista Drive. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mazza, members of the Planning Commission. As mentioned, the next item is a lot merger of two lots and proposed construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. This project is located in the Sycamore Park neighborhood. It's north of Sea Vista Drive at the end of a private access easement. There is environmentally sensitive habitat area or ESHA to the north within the property boundaries, and the project is not within the appealable jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. Just to give you some.
Tyler, could you turn, pull your mic a little bit closer?
Sure, sorry about that. Just to give you some, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Just to give you some background, on January 12, 1989, the California Coastal Commission approved the original CDP for this site, construction of a 6,600 square foot single-family residence, which included 2,500 cubic yards of grading. Under that application, the grading and construction had started, which, remnants of which you can see today on site, it was never finalized, never finished. Another approval on November 23, 2000, this time by the city, who approved Plot Plan Review 99091 for the construction of a new home, 81, 8154 square feet, which included a basement, variance for setbacks, and a site plan review for height. This project was never followed through with. There was a third approval on February 3, 2009, in which the Planning Commission approved CDP 06, 069 for the demolition and removal of the existing foundation, a 7,366 square foot single-family residence with a subterranean garage, and many of the associated discretionary requests that are applied for under this project. The scope of work for this project includes the construction of a 5,510 square foot, two-story single-family residence, 2,006 square foot, subterranean garage and storage area, a new onsite wastewater treatment system, swimming pool, spa, landscaping, hardscape, grading, and retaining walls. There's a few discretionary requests here. Lot merger to merge the two parcels, conditional CFC to recognize one of the parcels, which is non-compliant, so that it can be merged with the other legal lot. Two variances, one for fuel modification extension into the ESHA, an ESHA buffer, and another variance for construction on slopes in excess of two and a half to one. There's two site plan reviews, one for construction over 18 feet in height, and another for remedial grading proposed. There's a minor modification to reduce the east side yard setback and also cumulative side yard setbacks by no more than 20%, and a demolition permit to demolish the existing Basically, this project can be seen as two phases. There's the removal of the remnant foundations and the remedial grading to restore the site. And then there's the lot merger and subsequent construction of the single-family residence. and then there's the lot merger and subsequent construction of the single-family residence. So, right here is the proposed site plan. The main residence is sited within the previously, the previous developed building area, and the onset wastewater treatment system is south of the residence in the front yard. The homes required fuel modification will impact zones B and C, and those have, I'm sorry, the required fuel modification zones B and C will have impacts to adjacent ESHA on the property. It should be noted that any placement of the home on this property will have fuel modification impacts to ESHA, and a variance is unavoidable if the site is to be developed. This home's citing proposed tonight is consistent with the previous city approvals that were mentioned before, and this project is limited to a 10,000 square foot development area as required by the code for projects within ESHA. The project proposes a site plan review, as mentioned, for height up to 24 feet. No public or private views are anticipated to be impacted by this development. The project is also required to comply with the hillside residential development standards of the MMC. As such, the total development square footage of the site is reduced by 25%, and the absolute height of the proposed structure does not exceed 35 feet. Here are some story pool photos from our site visit. The project is expected to blend in with the surrounding built environment. This is a close-up. Here is a little further down the private access easement. No views, as mentioned, behind the home are anticipated to be impacted. So for this project tonight, we have no recommendation, but we ask that the planning commission consider the project and all the requests, and direct staff to come back with a resolution that matches, matches their decision tonight. And if you wanted to, we have a attached sample resolution that you can review and consider. Thank you.
May we have disclosures, please?
I own a home that's over 1,000 feet away from this project. I went by and met with the applicant's representative last week, Commissioner Smith was there also. I took a look at it. I do not think that the proximity that I live to this home will have any bearing in regards to me giving them a good hearing, and I look forward to not seeing that skeleton foundation that's been CMU block foundation that's been there for 30 years.
I don't know, that sounds like bias, maybe.
I met with the, well, I guess would be the applicant's representative on the site. I didn't learn anything different. The only thing was just the, the area of where the home is, sort of, I guess, the development footprint is going to be kind of similar to the neighboring home. I know that you see that on the aerial view. You don't really see much of it when you're there, other than like a little bit through the bushes, but, you know, that's pretty much it.
I was at the site, we met with, with the applicants, and I was with Commissioner Leonard, and I think that's a pretty, pretty nice little spot up there. Really liked it.
Yeah, I was, I met with the applicant on site, saw that no neighbor views appear to be impacted, thought there's some problematic issues about the width of the road, which we can discuss, and I guess that's about it.
And I have no disclosures. Okay, want to go, any questions of staff before we go to the hearing? Okay, we have the applicant who has 15, 15 minutes, and his team includes, and that is Julian Aldridge?
Aldridge.
Aldridge, okay, and Stephen Summers is in your, on your team. That'll be followed by Joe Drummond.
And we'd like to reserve 10 minutes for the presentation, and then five for rebuttal after. All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stephen Summers with Crest Real Estate, representing the applicant as the land use consultant for the project. Also here today is the homeowner and applicant himself, Julian Aldridge, and members from the architectural firm Dutton Architects that designed the house, as well as other members from our team at Crest. We are very excited to be here today presenting this project to you. Before I go into it, I did just want to note, you know, I think planning staff and Tyler in particular deserve some acknowledgement. They're kind of thrown into the fire on this and many other projects, and have really stepped in admirably. I know Tyler's been coordinating with Marshall and our team a lot over the past few weeks to get ready here, and it just bears some acknowledgement. So, the project before you today on Sea Vista Drive, you can see an aerial image with house rendered in 3D in the center there, is a home that we feel really blends in with the hillside and is sighted specifically because of some of the existing development characteristics of the site. What you'll notice in this image, though, is just to the right, the existing house to the east, it really extends just as far up the hill to the kind of same contour and distance to the north as our home does. There are other sites further east that follow the same pattern of development as Commissioner Peak mentioned. Next slide. This just summarizes our entitlement request. In the interest of time, I'm going to scoot past it. So, here's an aerial image showing the existing conditions on site. So you can see the kind of dilapidated remnant foundations that are existing on the property today. These are a result of a 1989 coastal development permit that was approved, partially acted upon, but clearly never completed, and just left in this pretty harmful, dilapidated state. It does bear noting, the site is 4.35 acres, one of the largest properties in the surrounding area, and this is a close-up of some of the existing conditions. You know, it has been an eyesore for the community. Additionally, it's hazardous, you know, it is kind of an attractive nuisance situation. There's deteriorating rebar, concrete, et cetera. We're going to be removing all of this. It is actually going to be sent to a concrete facility that kind of does certified reclamation of old concrete, so it'll be recycled to the best of our ability. And I also think it's really important to take note of this because the location of these foundations really drive our proposed location of the building. Our building is sighted almost exactly within the parameters of the existing disturbed area, which is really made for what we believe is the least impactful alternative for our project. Here you can see an image of the story poles, showing that they are kind of right where those foundations are located, and a close-up here, which even more just shows how it is really located directly on top of the disturbed area on the site. Furthermore, one thing that I think bears noting here, the architects did a really good job on this project, sort of stepping the project up with the hillside and dislocation of the building. It's not just the area of most disturbance, it's also an area where a building can be sighted, and then the roof of the building is just a few feet below a flat pad up slope, which you can kind of just see the mesa there, before the hillside continues up quite a ways above. And so our building just sort of tucks in very nicely there to blend in with the hillside. This also allowed for limited landform alteration on the property. And this slide just shows a summary of homes in the area. I think what's really important to note here is our floor area ratio is the absolute lowest of any of these properties at .032. We are proposing 6,013 square feet of TDSF on a site that allows just over 7,500, so we are 1,500 square feet below the limit, which, you know, I think is a great sign of a good project. Here, just summarizing some of the previous approvals, as mentioned by Tyler, a 1988 project approved in 89, which proposed 6,600 square feet and was 35 feet in height, and then in 2006, 7,366 square foot home was approved, 28 feet in height, and that case had almost all of the exact same requests approved that we're requesting here today. So really, the best precedent case that you could ask for. It is significantly larger, however, than what we're proposing, by about 1,300 square feet in terms of TDSF. In the upper right, I do want to just focus your attention on that image. That shows the outline of the building that we're proposing in red over the existing foundation, so you can see just how clearly centered the building is on that existing disturbed area. You can also see to the left of that, that other flat pad that we're not touching that I mentioned previously. Here is an aerial site plan. Again, you can just see to the right or east, the existing home, which extends to the exact, almost exactly the same distance to the north and up slope as our home. So we really are just continuing the pattern of development in this neighborhood. Furthermore, by placing the home here, we were able to place the septic system in Leachfield to the south to, you know, put that even further away from ESHA. This chart summarizes some of the, you know, key development characteristics and highlights in color, the ones where we are asking for relief. I'm just going to go to the next slide here. So, our minor modification for reduced setbacks. We feel this is a very clearly justified request based on the unique shape of the lot. You can see on the right, our building, this site is essentially a flag lot, but the pole portion is wider than normal. It's 120 feet wide. Our entire development is located within that much narrower portion of the site. The lot width, which determines your side yard setback, is over two times the width of the actual area of development, at almost 278 feet versus 120 feet. So that's where we felt that the reduction was justified, but we are still providing a 22-foot, 4-inch side yard setback. As far as the ESHA setback reduction, we are requesting a reduction to 57 feet for the distance of the building to ESHA, and, you know, again, our building, it's really located in the existing disturbed area of the site. So we felt that overall, this had the least impact of any potential development location for the property, and you can see in the right-hand side, there are these several kind of overlapping shaded areas. What that represents is the brush clearance zones or fuel modification zones for neighboring properties that sort of overlap the ESHA, what would have been ESHA area, and so really, we only have this kind of narrow sliver that's additional impact from our project. Again, we think it's very justified by the existing disturbance on site. Finally, just want to speak about construction on slopes, which are steeper than two and a half to one. These are manufactured slopes, as mentioned, the site was graded and partially developed previously. You can see in red, we've kind of pointed to those two yellow bands. If you look on the further right side, we've got the whole site there, you can see these two yellow bands just kind of slice through the development area. They're not very long, and that's just their existing walls kind of going from one pad to the next onsite. So it's not a natural condition out there, and furthermore, we are still stepped far away from where the real hillside begins to ascend, where you see the orange and red. Now I'm going to hand it off to the homeowner, Julian.
I have never seen somebody present quite so quickly and so well, so thank you, Stephen. Good evening, everybody. My name is Julian Aldridge, and I'm the owner of this lovely plot of land, as you guys have mentioned, along with my wife Karen, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight due to work commitments, as she will say, one of us has to work. Anybody here love music, or have that one favorite song that just drives a lot of their life? Thought you probably do. In the summer of 1976, I was living in South London, where it rains all the time, and I heard the song that would really forever change my life. The song was "Born to Run" by Bruce Springsteen, I'm sure all of you know. Bruce painted a picture of a land of opportunity, of possibility, of passion, all the things that South London seemed to lack way back then. It sewed in me a nation love of America, even though I'd never visited the country. Over the next 20 years, I visited many, many, many times for work and sport, and I fell in love with so much of this country, but particularly, I fell in love with California, and particularly the coast, and I had this dream that maybe one day we could live in this mythical place called Malibu. In 1996, I immigrated here with my then-wife, and we, like a lot of other immigrants, sort of started from scratch, built a pretty good life. I then got divorced and started from scratch again. I'm sure a few people can, again, resonate with that. Over the last 15 years, my wife and I have built a couple of companies, hers in particular, has been really very focused on athletes and empowering young women in particular, which makes my heart happy. And today really is the logical culmination, for me personally, of 48 years of a love affair with America, even before I came here. We're aiming to build something which we feel is very perfect for Malibu, for this particular neighborhood. Over the last seven years, we purchased the land in November of 17, I believe, we have met with most of our neighbors whenever we can. We actually polled them again about six months ago to make sure nobody had any objections. We received a lot of email support, and nobody actually wanted to put that in writing for, I think, very obvious reasons at the moment. And we're incredibly excited to build what for us will be a dream home in this incredible community, and to be part of this community and be able to give back to it over the next few decades.
Excuse me, you have four minutes and 51 seconds, and you wanted to reserve your time at five. If you want to keep talking, go ahead.
I am done. So I want to say thank you, and looking forward to this.
Okay, they have four minutes and 51 seconds for rebuttal.
Do you mind turning off the mic, please?
Joe, you're next.
Can we not turn the mic on and off remotely? No?
So I'm not here to oppose the project, I'm actually neutral. I'm just here to give you the statistics that were not in the staff report. I just took it from the tax assessor record. So for table one, and on page six, I think it is, the first house is 2,536 square feet, the second one was 3,850 square feet, the third one was 1,968 square feet, the fourth one is 1,870 square feet, the fifth one is 1,703 square feet, the sixth one is 4,196 square feet, the seventh one is 5,759 square feet, and the last one is 6,583 square feet. So if you take off the highest and the lowest one, the average would be 3,300 square feet, and at just over 6,000 square feet, TDSF, that's almost twice the size of the average homes, so it will be almost the largest house in the immediate area. But it is, and it is a little bit concerning that the build is occurring within the ESHA buffer, but if no one's opposing this project, and it's the least environmentally damaging, then I'll leave it in the commission's hands. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any other Zoom speakers?
There's no raised hands.
Okay, you can do your rebuttal now.
The only item that I would note for rebuttal is that our home is roughly 1,500 square feet below the allowable TDSF, as far as the zoning regulations are concerned. Additionally, this site is substantially larger than the neighboring parcels, which is why our floor area ratio, comparing the square footage of the home to the overall lot size, is so much smaller than kind of the average in the neighborhood. And additionally, you know, I think it is important to mention, the other speaker even did mention as well, you know, if there was no opposition, Julian has done a great job of kind of reaching out to his neighbors consistently throughout the process, and we have not received any, you know, feedback in opposition with the project. I think frankly, people are very excited to see what has become, again, an attractive nuisance, be repaired, restored, see the slope kind of re-landscaped with a lot of native plant materials, and, you know, ultimately see it kind of a nicely taken care of site that is safe for the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're closing the public hearing. We're at the commission table, any comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project. Second?
Okay, and you're going to be mad at me because I have quite a few questions.
I have some too.
I'm not going to be mad, I just want to be efficient.
Okay, well, we will be. Scott, you want to start off?
Sure, a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. Let's see. First question, this is for staff. We've heard suddenly lately, from, I don't know, three or four applications lately have talked about the floor area ratio, which is not something we look at in code, and is staff kind of suddenly, that's strictly commercial, are we suddenly giving that as a guideline to people to work out, or just random coincidence that a couple of people have done that lately?
Must be a coincidence, but I think they're trying to make the point that, you know, the size relative to the lot is not, not big.
I think, you know, when it gets to the site plan review and the neighborhood character, we tend to think more about the absolute size of the house itself compared to the other houses, regardless of lot size. Let's see, so, do we have on screen? Let's see, so do we have on screen, Parker, do we have sheet G 0.21? Can we put that on screen? It's the fire department sheet.
Commissioner Hill, you know what page in the staff report that's on?
Well, it's in the packet, and it's not actually in the PDF staff report, it's just in the packet.
So it's the fire department approval plan you want?
Yeah, and it's specifically the, here, look, it's, it's...
It's the fire department access along roadway.
Yes, it reads, "Fire Department, Department Access Along Roadway."
G 0.21. Okay, well, as we're pulling that up, there were a couple, this aerial view with the numbers attached to it raised a couple of concerns for me. That is the one, and hopefully we can zoom in a little bit more to see what I'm talking about. On the, on the, look at the lower road first, and it's going to be hard to read those numbers. But, okay, so one concern is the numbers, as they go up the street, they tend to be 22, 21, 22, 23 feet up there. Those are, that's the width of the easement, correct? Because the actual paved road is substantially narrower in places.
Right.
So that's the width of the easement, but not the actual road.
Hold on, I don't know if that's such a case. I think that what's marked on here is not the easement, I think that what's marked on here is the width of the road, because it gets substantially wider when you come up to the end where the road is wide.
So not only that...
I'm with you.
Hang on, hang on.
The road is very narrow.
The road is narrow.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
And remember, let's ask to be recognized.
Yeah. All right, so we, do we have a definite comment?
I don't know if we have confirmation. I see what you're saying. If you look at the part of Seavista where Villa Escondido turns onto Seavista, it looks like there's portions of that easement that are green, right?
Yeah.
Vegetation, so I don't know for sure. This isn't, this isn't exactly a survey.
Well, okay, so then the other concern is that this points out, is that those numbers stop when they get up to the, let's call it sort of the landing, before it goes up the final straight stretch of driveway to the house. There are no numbers for that final portion that is substantially narrower, actually. And I, so a couple of things. One, if the fire department approved this, they did it contrary to law, because if you've got more than one house on an access, you have to have 15-foot wide, more than one house, 20-foot wide minimum, no discretion. If you've got one house, you can have 15 feet.
But if, if you look on the first sheet, it shows you, the width is 22 and 1/2 feet, I just don't understand the issue.
Yeah. A substantial section of that last stretch is 15 feet, and there are three houses on it, not, not just the one house. So that's a concern, and just looking at, I mean, this is, my concern is raised by actually being on the site and looking at it and seeing how a fire truck would have trouble turning around. So A, it's contrary to the code, if they approved it, they approved it illegally. And B, I wonder if they just looked at this map, if this is what they looked at and said, "Oh, okay, we see numbers that are 21, 22, 23, 24, all the way up there," and didn't really, you know, did they, do we know that the fire department actually went out on the site and walked it?
Easy now.
Yeah, I can't speak for the fire department. As we know, it's contracted through the county.
Yeah.
But they do a thorough review, and I, it would be hard to believe they would approve an access plan without knowing the implications of what they're approving.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't want to be a hard ass about this, it just seems like kind of an unsafe situation here. Okay, so I still have more, but I yield for Dennis's comment.
Thank you. The reason this got approved is, if you didn't notice, there's already a house under construction next door. So of course this is going to be approved, they're not going to deny it. You're, I don't know what you're after here. There's already, there's already a house that got approved ahead of this one, so they're not, they're not going to talk about that.
To understand your point, if I may, you're saying they already saw that there are at least two houses on it?
There's one under construction right now.
No, I know, but if you've got more than one house, you're supposed to have a wider road.
Then they would have done it sooner, or maybe there is something in their paperwork that says they have to do it and come back to these folks, and they have to talk about it, which I don't, guess you have heard about. So I'm going to say no.
All right, so my other...
Can I ask you just something on the road thing specifically?
Yeah, Scott, are you recognized?
So if you, if you look on G 0.2, it gives you the exact section that you're talking about right now, and it shows you the width on there with the walls.
It states in the staff report it's 15 feet.
It goes from, the narrowest point is 17 and 1/2, and then it goes 18, 18, 1.28, and it ranges this whole road right here.
They widened it here, once they get to this point, yeah, they go wider.
It goes wider once it gets fast.
This section is...
The beginning section is totally narrow. I just, I don't think how, the other issue with this is that what's documented also on here is that there is only a 15-foot easement. Even though the ride, the road is wider than that, when these things were done back then, they only needed and only received a 15-foot easement. So I just don't see how, if the fire department is okay with this, and they've already signed off on this, why this is becoming an issue. I'm bewildered at that.
You bewildered that I'm raising, or bewildered that they got this far?
I'm confident in the fire department's approval of this project at this phase. That's why I made a motion to support.
And we all know that the fire department has a will serve list, and they have maps that show where they won't go. And this is probably one of those maps.
We don't know a fact about that, though.
Well, I do.
Okay, so, all right, so...
Hold on, the only other point on that is that you have a city, our city's already approved two different projects on this site. I don't think that the conditions were any different than were there, based on visiting the site and seeing that those walls of that house was there for a very long time, and the easement hasn't changed, to my knowledge.
Two things, or one thing. The fire department regulation that requires these minimum widths, as mentioned, is relatively new. I think it came into effect like 2020-ish. So these, both of, the prior houses could have been approved under the 15 feet is wide for two houses rule, is wide enough, right? So that's a distinction.
Can we have a comment from Drew, is that okay?
Yeah.
We have a fire department-approved project in front of us. I think your point is noted, and your record will be your vote.
Okay, so I have another concern here, too. Moving on, on the minor modification to the side yard setback, this is a question for staff, Tyler. They don't need a modification to the side yard setback to develop this property. Typically, we give them the minor mod when they need it for some reason. Here, they could build something, you know, still nearly 6,000 square feet without applying for it. So the question is, is there some theory, some grandfathering theory that we're leaning on here to say either, like, which of these is a precedent, or both? One, that, as they've pointed out, a lot of the site is actually much wider, so even though, so we're at kind of the narrow portion of the site, we should somehow allow some leeway on the side yard width? Or B, that the existing remnant foundation encroaches into that already, so we're saying that's fine. I just, this is a question about precedent and what we should or shouldn't be giving on this, and why.
Yeah, it's because they're developing on the narrower portion of the lot to avoid further impacts to the Escha to the north. So, you know, we talk about things like least environmentally damaging alternative, there could be two developed parcels on a separate application in which you have complete Escha disruption on a parcel to the north. So the applicant's proposing a project that is within an already developed area and choosing to use the slimmer portion of the property. And then speaking directly to the minor modification, the, it's not the same as a variance, it is a discretionary request, but you just have to basically show that others within the area, like, there's no, others within the area enjoy a similar use, and there are other properties that have, you know, similar setbacks that were built in the county days. So I guess the burden for proof, I guess, is what I'm saying, is slimmer for a minor modification, especially for setbacks, than it is for a variance.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess my final question, wonders about, well, maybe two, the landscaping, they have specked six non-native trees that are expected to grow between 25 and 40-foot height, as well as a few native trees. And I just, it just seems like not a very felicitous move to be planting tall non-natives right at the wildland interface. Do we, do we want to sort of dial that back a little bit?
Why don't you go to the page of the landscape plan, and we can go over this in more detail.
Yeah, do you have the landscape plan up?
L 6.
Yeah, I might remember what I looked at here, but...
I'll find it.
Look at L 5.0, that has the legend and notes.
L 5.0 is irrigation.
That's where all the notes are.
Yeah, I'm not remembering where I, where I got this now, but it's in the spec somewhere.
This is the planting plan, L 6.2?
Specifically...
The planting plan, L 6.2.
That sounds right.
You want us to show it?
And then it's all, it extends also on the 6.3, but you want to start with L 6.2?
The planning director would like to speak.
Just a reminder that the fire department will also have to approve this planting plan. So if they do have any concerns about these large trees, it's caught through their process as well. So right now, this is proposed landscaping plan until such time that the final brush clearance certifications are agreed upon with the fire department.
It's, I have a question on that. It's my understanding they review the zones 1, 2, and 3, not the landscaping plan. Zones 1, 2, or 3 are clearance for brush.
So I've...
Majority of this landscaping is in the front yard, not the backyard.
Correct, but they have a role. My point is that they have a role in reviewing plant materials, and they do have a right to request substitution of certain plants that they deem to be problematic for this zone.
Well, I guess one concern that's within our purview, that's not necessarily fire department, is that they're non-natives. So for our landscape plan, we should be, and I don't remember exactly how far from the house they are, but this is almost more a discretionary question of, you know...
Well, anything over 50 feet has to be native, according to our code.
From the, 50 feet from the house, yes.
So are any of these trees that you're referencing more than...
Can we, the applicant can tell us more specifically, I think.
Less than 50 feet?
Can we ask you?
Could you come up with a question?
Point out where these trees are?
Yeah.
Scott, can you, can you...
So on sheet L 6.0, it's the planting boundary plan. I have a color-coded version, you guys might be a little harder to find, but there are circles around the seven proposed trees. Five of them, I spoke to our landscape team about this today, actually. Five of them are coastal live oaks, they are native and fire resistant. Two of them are non-native, and Julian and I spoke about this. We would be comfortable, if you wanted to make it one of the conditions of approval, that all of the trees that are proposed be native and fire resistant species. We are absolutely comfortable with that.
Perfect, I would love to put it in a condition that says...
I would accept that condition.
That says that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think it's the last potential...
Could we also get confirmation from the secondor that he's comfortable with the amended condition?
Oh, the secondor is, okay.
Thank you.
And then finally, you mentioned that you, the applicant mentioned that they will do some certified reclamation of all that concrete. I don't know how you recycle concrete and how worthwhile that is, and can we put in a condition that says that they do that? Is that, is that a sense of the thing?
I believe it's actually, it's required.
Wait, wait, wait. Everybody put up your finger when you want to speak. Yes, Scott?
I believe that that's a required condition of the demolition anyways.
Is it in there?
I would defer to...
Recycle report.
I would defer to Tyler on that. I don't know if this is different, because it's strictly a foundation, it's not a home with wood and the other things, but I believe that they're required, whoever's doing the demolition, to provide that recycling report to the city. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I'll leave it there then, thank you.
Okay, I've got quite a few questions. I, as you, as you can tell, there's a lot of variances and modifications and et cetera, and that always is a red flag to me. Now, the first one is the development area. The development area is shown on GO 3, and, but when you look at what's developed, it's much larger than that area, especially the hardscape and the, on the ocean side of the house, the trails, the landscaping, the, all that, that stuff. And since this is limited to 10,000 square foot development area, how is that allowed?
I'm catching up with you, and I apologize, I wasn't the original planner, so I'm not as familiar with this project, but as you know, some things are excluded from the development area. Fire department accesses are excluded, so if you're talking about hardscape in the driveway, that could be...
No, I'm talking about, now I'll find the plan here.
Can you confirm the page number?
Which one, what do you want it for?
You said GO 3, we don't see that.
Well, you need a magnifying glass, it's on GO 3, that's right.
GO 1.
GO 0.1.
That's not the development area, right here. G, oh, over here.
Here.
G, George. Okay, for example, L 5.2 shows the irrigation. L 2.0 shows a series of trails that are cement-based, impervious, that go all the way down to the ocean side of the property to the front, well outside. And that, that also shows the development area on that lot, on that plan. So virtually, now granted, the driveway's excluded, and it's shown on, if you could put up L 2.0, you'll see it.
Getting there, sorry, bear with me. L 2.0.
Chair. Chair. So you're, you're referencing L 2.0?
Yes.
Is the issue that you have the walk path in the front yard?
Well, that and everything else. We'll go to another one, you'll see that it's all landscaped.
Here it is.
The whole thing. Whereas if you look at the box on L 3.0, that's the development area. And unfortunately, this property has been developed so many times, it is restricted. So I'm, I'm asking how, if we have a 10,000 square foot restriction, how do we have all this development outside of that restriction area?
So you're talking about the pathway that goes around...
Well, that and, and, we can go a couple pages later. Well, there's a pathway, there's septic systems, there's pumping, there's irrigation.
So the OWTS is commonly not included in development area.
What isn't?
The OWTS.
No, I'm talking about the impermeable pathway in this case.
Yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying there, and sometimes pathways, if it's not, it's not considered development if there's no grading, or there's no, there's no cement development that's placed on...
The LIP, the LIP specifically excludes the use of private pathways in Escha, specifically.
That one's not in Escha, that's south of the property.
But it's, if it's, it's technically in Escha if it's outside of the development area.
Yeah. I'm giving you examples of types of development that don't get included. Like I said, on-site waste water treatment systems, specifically the driveway.
But pathways are specific.
And again, sometimes pathways...
Specifically mentioned, specifically called out in LIP.
If the pathway is graded, but...
No, any pathway through Escha is banned.
But this isn't through Escha, that's what I'm saying. But this isn't through Esha, that's what I'm saying. So, so.
Okay, then, then I need a, I need a definition. This is not Esha, but this property is restricted to 10,000 square feet of development because of Esha.
Because it has fuel modification impacts to Esha, yes. The pathway that you're talking about, this one right here, that has, creates like a little rope, that is not within Esha. And technically, if they built just that path, that would not require a fuel modification that would encroach into Esha.
Okay, is it included in impermeable coverage?
I'll have to double check that.
He says it's all permeable material.
It says right on the plan, impermeable.
On L2.0, it is labeled on the material plan as mulch.
It says no. It says imperious cement base. Okay? Cement base.
Chair?
Yes. Come up for a question?
Chair?
Yeah, he's going to answer a question here.
We can make it into a condition, Joe. Go ahead.
If you look at the location of the path on the screen right now, there's an arrow pointing to it. And I don't know if you're able to zoom in, but it specifically, there's an arrow pointing to it and it says mulch. So it is just, no, up and to the right on the path, right there.
It's an arrow going right to it. There's a word on the left there that says mulch with an H.
The mulch is that.
No, and, and the path, zoom in just to the middle of the screen there. If you could, please.
It says, if you look at the.
It says mulch.
It says, no, if you look at, go down the mulch path, move it over to the left.
Move it over to the left, okay.
No, to the left.
The other way. Look, it does say mulch.
That's the, that's for the driveway.
So the impervious portions are the driveway.
That's the chip seal for the asphalt driveway.
It does say, it does say mulch. They also have a key over here that indicates that texture is, is mulch.
Okay, now, then that brings up another question. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings in another question. Do we or do we not ban mulch within five feet of a house?
Yeah, there's certain mulches that are, that are banned.
Okay, well, is this specifically, this is going right up to the house all the way, across the front of it. Is, has that been?
Chair, I think it actually goes up to the pool. It doesn't go up to the house. It goes up to the driveway.
The little checkerboard, whatever it is.
Why don't you just ask for a condition?
So, so is it okay to have a condition that mulch may not be within five feet of the house?
I have no problem with the condition, I just don't think it's needed because the mulch is up against the pool and some hardscape in the driveway. And it's not within five feet of the house.
Now, another question is certificate of, a certificate of compliance. I didn't see any discussion of issuing, issuing one, just that one is required on the lot that is not being developed. And if it's an illegal lot to begin with, because it's, how do you make it compliant to give a certificate of compliance, since it's basically unbuildable?
Yeah, so it's a conditional CFC, which means they have to satisfy certain conditions in order to get their certificate of compliance. And that, the lot merger portion of the project will, will be done prior to any construction.
So they're going to issue a certificate of compliance on the, not on the lot to be merged into, they're going to do it on the merged lot. They're not going to bother with the step we did on Greenwater last time of having to get a condition, a certificate of compliance on the, on the Lot A, or Lot A or Lot B or whatever it is, the big one.
Yeah, that's what's before us tonight. So if you approve it, we will finalize the certificate of compliance process for the existing lot. And then after the lot merger, after we do the lot merger, we will record one final certificate of compliance for the last legal lot.
So it's the opposite system than on the norms one last time, okay.
But it's, the key word here is a conditional certificate of compliance. And so there's conditions that need to be satisfied in order to obtain the certificate of compliance in this case.
Okay.
Can I ask Tyler what those conditions are, just to clarify them?
Sure.
Yeah, so in the resolution, we added basically transfer development credit if they have to retire some rights to the lot if they don't finalize the lot merger process.
So they can build the house without, without completing that process?
So what that means is that the, the lot to the north, the non-compliant lot, would need to retire its ability to develop in the future if they do not complete the process.
In other words, the same result. They couldn't, they couldn't use it as a separate lot anyway. Okay. Is that answered? Yeah? Oh, go ahead.
Just one other thing I'll add is the building code does not allow you to get a permit until you complete this process because effectively you can't build over two separate lots. So there's a huge incentive for them to get this done, they want to build.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering whether the process, we had a problem with the process last time.
John, you asked a question that I don't think was answered.
What was that?
On the, the development area question, the irrigation plan, does, does that not count as part of the development area?
Well, this is what I, this is, this is Tyler, this is my main question is, if you have a development area, and, and, but you don't, but, but anything that's disturbed you're, you're developing on, is everything on the, on the area outside of the development area, is it all excluded by code? Because it looks like there's a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, I mean, the strict letter of the law only excludes a couple things. However, it has been the city's longstanding practice to exclude things like, you know, native vegetation, restoration type things, OWTS, because that's, that covers a large area. In this case, there's a dispersal field. So those have been, those have been commonly not included in the development area.
And we've never considered amending our plan, so.
We, we, we don't count, we don't allow irrigation on the 4 to 1 slopes on Point Doom.
Right.
But you're saying that's okay here?
No, I'm not. I'm saying if, if you wanted to make it a condition that no irrigation can be outside of the, I think that, that's fine, if the applicant is okay with that.
I'm mainly just concerned about precedent.
That's what we're doing here. Scott, is that okay with you?
No, I don't think it's okay because then your landscape plan and this process is basically defunct and none of those things are going to survive.
Then you violate the code and so you open it up for, again, you guys don't like appeals, but that's what you do.
So, well, I just, I guess what I don't understand here is how do we have a project where we have an approved landscape plan that's showing a large amount of landscaping outside of that footprint?
Because this is an application, not a completed plan.
And then you're saying that you're not allowed to irrigate it. So I wouldn't even know why, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I know, but that's.
But yet you're allowed to have a leach field and you're allowed to have all the pipes for that. I'd done that up to me.
The answer to that is the code says you can have leach fields and you can't have.
Does it, the code specifically say that you cannot have landscaping irrigation in that area? No, it does not say that. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And has it been the city's, Tyler, policy to allow or not allow any irrigation outside of that footprint?
It's, landscaping is kind of, kind of considered one of those, those things that aren't always included in the development area.
Are not.
Are not.
Correct.
But they are sometimes.
Are sometimes?
If you're grading, yeah.
If you're grading, right.
So in.
They certainly wouldn't be in, in.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Yeah, let me, let me just, if this lot was 100% Esha, which would bring up a 10,000 square foot limitation on development area, you would not be able to touch the other areas for the irrigation, correct?
So as we said, you know, there's certain things that are unavoidable. You have to, you have to install an OWTS. You have to install a driveway. Now, the driveways are excluded up to a certain extent, the amount that's allowable by the fire department. But any, any grading, it's, it's usually, development area, when you read the definition, it's a lot of times tied to grading. So when there's subject, when there, when there's no grading or when there's landscaping on unaltered grades, then it's not always counted.
Okay, Scott, you had a question?
I did. Did you guys intend to perform any grading where you were going to be landscaping?
No, the only grading that is being completed is the remedial grading, which is not elective, absolutely required due to the geotechnical, uncertified fill on site. Once that is completed, there's no further alteration or grading of that area.
So just to be clear, there's no grading that's going on with the landscaping?
Correct.
Okay.
And, well, yeah, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I notice quite a bit of, the, the condition says they have to use split rail fences in, in the conditions. But on the plans, there's quite a bit of chain link fencing. Is that excluded by that condition?
I have to double check, but yes, if they are with the Esha and enclosing more than half an acre, they have to use the wildlife friendly fencing, yes.
So all this, all this fencing they have all the way up to the top of that thing and it has to come out or not come, will go in, correct?
If it's enclosed. So if there's a corridor for wildlife to escape, it doesn't necessarily have to. It's, it's when you're enclosing, I think it's a acre.
Yeah, but this is a, this is a, you're blocking off one end of it. So the wildlife have nowhere to go. They can escape back to where they came from, but not, they can't go anywhere.
Chair?
But I, that's just the condition that's in there and that, that governs, that they have to use split rail fencing. Okay, yes, Scott?
So I just wanted to be clear, the, the issue in regards to the fencing, and like Tyler said, is if it's fully enclosed, if it's not fully enclosed, then there's, isn't a limitation on that size. Is that correct, Tyler?
That's correct.
Okay.
Except for wildlife corridors. You can't block them.
Understood, but if it wasn't enclosed, it wouldn't be blocking it because you could walk around on either side.
No, there's such a thing as a, you know, you, yeah, you can keep them up in the mountains and they can't come down. That, that, that cuts off a wildlife corridor.
Fair enough.
Okay, then, the thing that I, I need an explanation on why, why the grading is done in two steps and we don't count it all in one step. Because we've been told several times that the foundation has to be remediated, but when you read, when you read the definition of remedial grading, it's to restore natural problems. And I can't, can't imagine that somebody would put in a, a foundation that extensive under a permit from the city and not have their grading inspected. So are, are you saying that grading, grading was never inspected in that area and it was, it wasn't, it's not uncompacted fill? Because that's what they're claiming, that they're, they're remediating this uncompacted fill.
Inspected when? I, I'm a little unclear about the question.
The question is, you've got a, you've got a city permitted foundation.
Yeah, but that's.
That you're taking out.
Since, since the early 90s, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And city would not permit a, a foundation on uncompacted fill. They, you know, it was graded that way and it was inspected and approved. So when you come back and say, well, I'm going to exclude 2,885 cubic yards of grading because it was done back then, we're going to redo it, but we won't count it. That's what I don't understand. What is this two-step process to correct something the city's already inspected and approved?
Done prior to the city.
Yeah, I don't know if it was inspected or approved. I mean, the.
Well, your, your law says they got a CDP.
Yeah, but that isn't, so in the construction process, there's, when you actually build the, the site, there's multiple checks that the building safety department will do. And so that's what I thought you were referring to, like, did a building inspector go out and inspect that the grading was done correctly?
Well, how would, how would the, how would they put in the foundation without that inspection?
They can pull building permits, but to a certain extent, they have to get, yeah, they have to get inspections from the city or the agency at the time. This was approved originally during county. I'm not sure when the foundations were constructed, but based on the CDP being an 89 CDP, you would imagine it probably 1990, maybe 91.
Okay, well, let me restate the question. Remedial grading has a certain definition. It's supposed to go back to natural grade. Okay? This isn't. So why, this is the first time I've ever seen a, a grading calculation in a, in a CDP that had what was quote, a two-step process, where you don't count one part, one part of the process, then you don't count the other process.
That's not, that's not what's being done here. It's two phases in the term of the complete construction, but all the grading is counted under this application you're reviewing tonight.
There's less than 1,000 cubic yards of grading.
Of, of the, of the not exempt, yes.
Yes, and what I'm asking also is remedial grading does not include landform alteration. So this was obvious major landform alteration, 2,885 cubic yards of landform alteration. How is that included as remedial?
So 2,500 cubic yards got approved under the 89 CDP. And then the remedial grading is to restore to the existing conditions. And then the house is proposed to be built on existing conditions.
So the remedial grading is taking it back to the, not the natural grade, but the.
That's correct, right?
Yes, it's just removing the.
Why don't you come out? You have to come up here.
So the remedial grading that is proposed is solely being done to remediate those existing conditions largely created by the prior project, which are non-conforming and substandard under current regulations. I do want to note, I'm looking at on sheet C1 on the right-hand side, and this is going to be nearly impossible for anyone to read, so if we are able to pull it up on the screen, that would be wonderful. Sheet C1.
The little tiny one in the corner?
So on the right-hand side, there's the City of Malibu sheet that you fill in your grading quantities on. On that, lowering the mic so I can read it. On that sheet at the bottom, it says remedial grading is grading recommended by a full-site geotechnical or soils report prepared by a licensed geologist or soils engineer, which is necessary to correct physical deficiencies on the site for the construction of a primary residential structure or, or access to the lot. It doesn't say to correct natural conditions. It simply says to correct physical deficiencies on the site, which is what these are. They're existing physical deficiencies and it just.
Yeah, but I know, I understand what you're saying. That's what this says. But the code also says definition of remedial grading, and it does not include landform alteration. Okay? It specifically excludes it.
And what I would note is, you know, I think generally the intent of remedial grading and why there's an exemption is you don't want to penalize an applicant or a property owner for grading that they not only are not choosing to do, but actually are having to spend significant amounts of money to repair, not of their own volition or choice. They have to, right? He has no choice but to do this.
I understand that. I understand that. The question, the difference here is you're not taking it back to natural grade. You're taking it to a grade you want to use to build on. Okay? And so there, there wasn't a notch in that hill there before. And, until they built that house or tried to build that house.
So if you look at sheet C3 in the, in the plan, you can see there's really a couple of primary areas. This isn't significant alteration of the pad that's being developed for the purpose of changing the elevation or improving the location of the building. Starting at the bottom, there's a footnote 2, which if you, when you go to the site, you can see there's this kind of odd mound that is right near where the fire truck turnaround would be located. That is just uncertified fill that was placed there. It's clearly unnatural, just old fill that was placed there many years ago. unnatural, just old fill that was placed there many years ago. That's, that's going to be removed as part of the project, but no development is being placed there. The next band where you see the topo lines coming across is just where the bottom wall of that existing house is. When that wall gets removed, you can't just leave it, you know, vertical slope, you have to regrade it at two to one. And then at the top, there's a cut slope that you can again see on site, and it, you know, it's just steeper than the two to one that is allowed today, so it has to be remediated per our soils engineer's requirement as well as the city's, you know, geotechnical reviewers.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Reading the LIP definition, remedial grading is that which is recommended by California licensed geologists that is necessary to mitigate a geotechnical hazard on site. Are we doing that? Are we, we're mitigating a geotechnical hazard? Okay.
Well, that's debatable. Now, next question is because this property was pre-graded back when, if you look at natural grade and that it would, you could see that on A 3.1, the house has stepped into the hill, but the garage, and you can see that on A 3.2, basically has on one side planters and on the other side a wall. And basements are allowed an entrance of, I think, 31 feet with two pillars. It might be 30 feet with one pillar, but it's some version of that. This has the appearance, if you look on A 3.2, of a three-story house, and if you look at the story poles, because the garage essentially was notched out of the hill rather than dug, dug into the ground. Now, so, and the reason why I question this is the, the two planters essentially are, they're not planters, they're retaining walls to hold up a swimming pool for the first floor and create, create a wall for a garage. The other side has a crawl space underneath it. It's, it's not a planter, it's, it's part of the wall. So you essentially have built a retaining wall that's about 12 feet high, all the way across the front with an entrance to a, to a garage. And to me, that's not the definition we use in our garages. We don't have, and by the way, and this is for the planning director, I found two pages in all of these pages that had any dimensions on them at all. None, zero. And we need to look at plans where we can figure out like how wide a garage is or, or how big a room is. We do need some dimensions on our plans. Granted, these are preliminary plans, but, you know, if a house is 20 by 40, you should say it's 20 by 40 instead of zero by zero. But anyway, how, how is that not a retaining wall that's holding up a swimming pool on the left of the house when you look at it? And there's no structure above it other than a swimming pool. There's nothing, nothing other than a wall.
What's the question, John?
The question is, where's the variances for all this and why, and is the garage truly underground?
You're saying that it needs to be no higher than six feet?
I have a section I want to show you guys if that's okay.
Okay.
You're saying it needs to be no higher than six feet? Is that what you're saying?
Well, at least you have to have a variance.
I think this is the section that best illustrates it. The subterranean garage is set back a little bit from the, the first floor, and you can see the existing grade line there. It cuts through. And then in terms of what, what you mean about the planters, as long as there's, it's been accepted before by this commission, but as long as it, they're not, they're not creating the, the grade in a sense, so they are using a retaining wall and behind that retaining wall is dirt, then that has been accepted. Now, what wouldn't be accepted is if they raised the building pad to achieve that effect. That's not what's being done here.
But behind the, behind the retaining wall is a room with a crawl space, not dirt. And that's the problem.
Yeah, and then here's another one that kind of shows compliance with the basement requirements. As a subterranean garage, they are allowed to have a 36-foot wide opening, which they have.
Yeah, no, it's the walls around it that I'm questioning. Now, also, the requirement is natural grade. And let me find the plan. It does, it says existing, not natural. And as, as we know, this has been graded. So where is the natural grade? And that's, that's Plan C7. Yes.
In this case, I think they're depicting existing as natural grade because you can see that the perforated line picks up from where the natural slope to the left side there cuts off. So they are recreating the natural, would have been the natural grade after the remediated conditions. I mean, this property's had multiple permits on it. That is creating the existing grade. It wasn't like they, it's not like they graded the property and then came in and applied for a permit after the property was bootlegged, graded, and-
But it wasn't bootleg graded.
I know, it was done with permits.
Right. Natural grade is natural grade.
Chair?
May I ask that everybody turn on their microphone when commenting so that members of the Zoom audience are able to hear?
Okay, sorry. No, 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 you're not recognized. You already said what, you said what you said, and I'm answering it. Can you go into a property that's not flat? Flatten it? Never build the house and come back 10 years later and say, oh, it's flat. I didn't do any grading. No, and the answer is no, because you did it under permit and it was counted. That's, but that's, you know, that's not, that's not, it might be considered nitpicking, but it's, it's how you get a garage that's actually has walls that hold up or the dirt around it, so it's a garage. And essentially, that pool has a retaining wall with dirt piled against it. To put the pool on, it's the sidewall of the garage. That's essentially what has happened. And, and you can look at the photograph.
Let's go back to the other class section. Isn't there a deck between? There's a wall.
There's a wall in front of that deck.
Chair, I'm confused what the question is.
Yeah. Is it that it's a retaining wall that's too high?
No, the question is, can you have an above-ground garage?
Chair, may I make a quick statement here? I just want to remind the commission, we have three other matters out.
But we have three other items until 10:30.
I, I understand.
And we are thorough here.
Chair, let me just finish.
We do not rush things.
Chair, let me just finish real quick.
Okay.
Because we do rush at the end, and so I just want to make sure if we are going to continue some, that we shouldn't, you know, be mindful of that, because what I see tend to happen is we spend a lot of time on the first and then we rush through the last one, so.
Yes, and that's what the chairman's for.
Yes.
And at 9:30, we decide what we're going to do usually.
And that's why I'm saying a reminder. I didn't tell you what to do.
Thank you for reminding me. And you can see this, if you want to look at it on A 2.1, you can see exactly what I'm talking about. So that's a question. I guess there's no answer.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Yes, you may.
Would you like to elaborate in regards to the retaining wall?
Sure. Well, so if you could go back to the last section that was on the screen, I think what I really would like to elaborate on is we're not using the existing walls that are on site to benefit us. We actually went through a painstaking process with city staff to essentially, wherever there was a wall, we would combine, we would connect the natural grade contours on either side through the location of that wall to make sure that what we are showing on this section is representative of a natural grade condition. So you notice that dashed line, that existing or natural grade, there aren't irregular vertical, you know, marks there where a wall would have been. This was actually really thoughtfully put together to determine what was, what were the natural conditions and to comply based on those. So I think, Chair Mazza, we're actually really doing what it is that you're looking for, which is basing the project on kind of logical natural conditions.
Can I ask, so you're saying that a cement wall is a natural condition?
No, what I'm saying is that where there is a cement wall, rather than show that as a vertical change in the grade, we actually essentially recreated by mapping out the natural contours on either side, what the resulting contours would have been under a natural condition, right? You have a wall, and, go ahead, Commissioner Hill. Sorry, not my role.
Can you tell, so we don't have the measurements on here. What is the elevation change between the bottom of the garage floor, where the garage door, and the pool deck? How much higher is the pool deck than the garage?
The pool deck is at 201 and a half, the garage is at 191, so it is 10 and a half feet.
So I think John, what John's trying to say is that we have a 10 and a half-foot approximate retaining wall, which we don't do without a variance.
Yeah, so typically, I believe it has been kind of customary that, that when you have these planter walls, that they're within the development area, so they're counting towards that 10,000 square feet, and they are spaced to sort of continue the natural grade, but just allow for a little bit more planting within, that that has been customarily allowed.
I would say that in order to create a basement, you need those retaining walls, and basements are allowed to have 12-foot ceilings.
Yes, but-
So there's no way to construct a basement without a retaining wall.
And what we're need, as far as I am questioning, is a variance for a retaining wall over six feet.
That, that would mean, the way you're describing it, every basement proposed in the city would need a variance?
No, no, I'm talking about the wall facing, not in part of the basement, next to it.
It's the same thing. This is just like a basement, but it's a garage. It's nothing different.
Below the pool, there is nothing but dirt. That is not a basement. Skylar?
I understand the issue that is being brought up here in regards to how the stepped wall is essentially making up what would be an infinity wall or something on a pool. If that were to be an infinity wall, would you have to get a variance for it if it was a pool with an infinity wall?
No, you're allowed to have foundations.
So I don't see what the difference would be, whether they're using a stepped planter to get the same result?
Is there, is there a limit? Could I have a 50-foot infinity wall?
Yeah, that'd be beautiful.
If it complied with the code, yeah.
And the code allows 50-foot infinity walls.
Probably do 100.
As long, as long as you meet all setbacks, yeah.
Boy, you guys read stuff into the code. Try to find that one.
No, I think it'd be a really nice-
Even Don's chuckling, okay? Okay.
Don's blushing to be recognized.
John, I want to be, I want to be really polite about it, but if you can just try to get to your questions and-
I am going through my questions one at a time.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm trying to explain it to you if you don't understand it. If you don't want to understand them, then I won't explain to you, but don't ask me questions then.
We just went around in circles for a long time on that.
Because nobody seemed to come up with a good answer. You were, number one, your mic wasn't on, and number two, you were not-
There was no question. You hear me now? There was no question.
And you're not recognized.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay.
One more comment?
No. When I'm done, you can have a comment. Just one other thing.
I could have had it out already.
Sure could have. You want to make your comment? Go ahead.
We're here to do a job. We have a lot of applicants here. I, you know, I feel like we're running the clock on this meeting, and as the city attorney said, I think we should try to wrap this up if we can.
Point taken. Okay, that's my questions. Now, I just want to make a statement. It's 8:24. Okay, we've gone through, everything through 8:24. We've got two hours left. We are going to give the, any applicant that ever comes here a complete hearing. We're not, as long as I'm chairman, going to shorten them because somebody wants to shorten them because they could care less about reading the codes or asking questions. So do we have, we have a motion? Do we have any other comments?
I just wanted to, if I may clarify with Rebecca, just that the motion is, did we need, you wanted me to make all of the findings on each individual thing here, or are you comfortable with the discussion that we've had thus far and then the one point about making the landscaping, there was a couple, a couple trees in there that they were going to make native and some coastal live oaks?
So if your motion would be to adopt the draft resolution that was included in your agenda report as amended, to add a condition of approval to require only native trees be planted on the site, that would provide the direction staff would need?
Great, that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. And Chair, would you like me to call the question?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. How long a break do you want? Okay, we'll have a break until 2:35, 8:35. Please do not talk to the commissioners about any item. Yeah, please do not talk to the commissioners about any item. Okay, we are opening the planning commission meeting on item 5A, which is conditional coastal development permit number 21-057 and demolition permit number 21026, an application to remodel and, misquote, a 970 square foot addition to an existing family residence with attached garage remodel and existing detached garage studio and associated development located at 2100, 21,900 Pacific Coast Highway. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Mazza, and good evening, commissioners. I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. So if that one is to repeat the introduction there, this is essentially a remodel and addition project here at 21,900 PCH. If I can have the next slide, please. So just quick look at the vicinity map here. You can see that it's located along Carbon Beach there, just a little southwest of the nearing, the nearby fire station there. If I can have the next slide, please. So existing supply conditions of the subject property, the main residence was built back in 1956, and that includes a one-car garage totaling a little over 3,000 square feet. There is a detached structure which was approved back in 1980 and received a CDP that also includes a one-car garage, and there is a art studio above that that totals 978 square feet. The subject property is non-conforming in the sense that the existing single-family residence there does not meet the west side yard setback, as well as unenclosed parking, obviously two spaces are missing there, and also the requirement per the LIP of a view corridor. Obviously, this is a pre-LIP development that, that exists there, so obviously there was no requirement for that view corridor previously. If I could have the next slide, please. So the overall project is to remove up to a little over 41, almost 42% of the exterior walls there of the existing single-family residence. The applicant has provided a major remodel agreement signed by the owner. Removal of up to 4.5% of the exterior walls of the existing detached structure, and that's obviously part of an overall remodel of both of those two structures. Additionally, there's an existing trellis within the courtyard at the northeast corner of the property that would be, being removed. And then the addition project, or addition component of the project, I should say, does involve a 291 square foot covered patio as part of a new second floor development there for the, essentially over the central portion of the existing single-family residence. And that does include 336 square feet of new living area there that's accessed by a new exterior staircase. Final piece of the addition project is construction of a 290 square foot first floor covered patio at the southeast corner of the existing single-family residence. So that would increase the square footage of the existing single-family residence by approximately 28%. Additionally, the roof height of that structure would be increasing from 10 feet 2 inches to a max height of 22 feet and 6 inches, where 24 feet is allowed. Obviously, as I mentioned before, it's part of an overall interior and exterior remodel of all structures on the property. And additionally, there is new permeable hardscape proposed within the entry courtyard there of the project. Next slide, please. So just looking at the site plan here, very quick overview, you can see the deck string line there is in the marigold color, as well as building string line shown there in green, so there was no proposed development going seaward of either of those lines. And then just pointing out the location of the single-car garages, which gives them two enclosed spaces. If I can have the next slide, please. So with, with regard to the non-conforming structure, so there's a couple sections within the LIP, all under the non-conformities section, and these two are applicable to the project. So it says here with subsection C of LIP, section 13.5, demolition and reconstruction that results in replacement of more than 50%. That's basically when it has to come into conformance. Obviously, with this posing 41.5% removal of those exterior walls for the single-family residence, it does not meet that threshold, and so those non-conformities can remain. And obviously, the detached structure there at 4.5% is well under that, so ditto for that one, too. Subsection E, this one essentially states that additions that increase the size of the structure by 50% or more should result in non-conformies coming into conformance. However, the single-family residence will be increasing in size by 28%, which is well below that 50% threshold. If I could have the next slide, please. So just a quick overview of floor plan here, first floor plan and second floor plan, those are really included. Go to the next slide, please, second floor. These are really included just as a reference point that we can come back and examine if needed as part of the presentation. If I could have the next slide. Just looking at the elevations here, so this one is taken from PCH, which is the north elevation in this case. So you can see, obviously with it being a beachfront property, there's two measurements of the height of the building. One obviously taken from PCH, which is the front portion of the building here, from the center line there. So we can see that the existing detached structure which will remain unchanged in height, that is about 19 and a half feet above PCH, as well as the, the new second story of the existing single-family residence, which would be at 22 feet and 6 inches, where 24 feet would be allowed. Next slide, please. So this one here shows the, the rear of the property here, so the southerly side, so you can see that this section is measured from the lowest finished floor, which in this case is the master bathroom, so that's 21 feet and 9 inches above. If, if we're to very conservatively measure it, that the diaphragm supporting that first, well, sorry, finished floor, lowest finished floor, that would be 22 feet and 7 inches. Either way, it comes well, well below the 24 feet there. Next slide, please. So just a quick look here from the west, you can see that the existing single-family residence there, at the portion closest to the property there, that's going to remain essentially unchanged there in height, so about 9, 9 feet and 8 inches above the lowest finished floor there. And you can see the proposed elevation for the new, or newly remodeled detached structure. Next slide, please. Just a look here at the, the east elevation there, again confirming that that nearest portion of development on the east there at the top for the single-family residence is going to be about 16 feet above the center line of PCH and about 15 feet and 5 inches above of the lowest finished floor level there. And again, also just looking at sort of the internal portion of that, or I should say, the, the interior of the property, the exterior of the detached structure there from the east. If I could go to the next slide, please. A quick look at the applicant's proposed rendering here, pretty self-explanatory. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is looking at it obviously from the, the rear of the property up towards the Santa Monica Mountains there, so you can see the, the raise in height there is, is in keeping with surrounding development there, sitting a little lower than the building there to the, to the west. If I could have the next slide, please. Just a quick, couple of photos here, just demonstrating that the project was obviously story pole, that's required. The photographs down here on the left, clearly taken from PCH, you can see the massing there from the story poles, and then taken from the beach immediately to the, to the south of the property there. And then the last picture there shown in portrait, this is taken looking east along Carbon Beach there, you can see the proposed, or the story poles proposing the overall structure of the residence there, the overall massing. Next slide, please. So here we have just a quick overview that there's no proposed grading at all with regard to sea level rise, that the property is located within the FEMA flood hazard VE zone, which has a base flood elevation of 18 feet. So no changes proposed to the lowest floor elevation, which is currently sitting at 21 feet, 21.29 feet NAVD, so that's obviously above the 18-foot requirement there. The proposed development's lowest floor elevation would be about just over, or just under a foot, actually, you know, I was right the first time, just over a foot higher than the existing lowest floor elevation. With regard to the primary view determinations, there's three in the surrounding area, there's 1, 22001 PCH, as well as a couple there at Carbon Canyon. So in analyzing those, there is expected to be no adverse impacts by the proposed development. And next slide, please. In terms of correspondence, so I did have a couple of questions. We emailed with Commissioner Hill last week, which I believe I was able to resolve those questions regarding square footage, the TDSF versus the assessor's square footage, and then emails, there were a couple of emails of support sent by neighbors and interested parties. They did not disclose their exact addresses, but it sounds as though they are very closely located by there. And final slide, please. If I can just summarize by saying that it's staff's recommendation to adopt planning commission resolution 24-41 approving the project as conditioned. The applicant is here and has a PowerPoint available, so I will hand over to, to them, and then remain available for questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the hearing, do we have any disclosures?
I met Mr. Smith at the, at the job site, didn't learn anything different.
Craig? Craig?
Yeah, driven by it a million times, looked at it specifically a couple times lately. I looked at assessor numbers, and yeah, I think Rick mostly answered those questions. And we can talk more about it if necessary, but, and by the way, thank you for automatically, Rick, automatically including the PVDs, so that we could, here could decide their relevance. And finally, I just happened to watch a movie from 1967 called Don't. And finally, I just happened to watch a movie from 1967 called Don't Make Waves, a really weird movie with Tony Curtis and Sharon Tate. A lot of it was shot on the bluff directly above the fire station there, looking down, looking down at this whole beach a lot of the time. And it was just shocking how from 67 to now, the density of the housing there has just gone, like, it was maybe a quarter of what it is now. There was a house on every lot, but they were much smaller. And, you know, so we, the gradual incremental development we experienced was, it was a shock to see it.
Scott?
I met the, the Mr. Schmitz down at the site, I believe it was last week, and I did some work a long time ago at this house for a previous owner, but I think that was a different owner than this. And that was almost, I mean, over six, seven years ago, a small repair.
Drew?
I walked through the house last Friday with Mr. Schmitz and nothing else to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose. By the way, if you want to see the development of Malibu, there's a website called Californiacostline.org, and they have slices of the coastline from 1972 until now. You can view any house in Malibu on the coast, or anywhere else on the coast, all the way up to Oregon. Okay, are there any commissioner questions or comments before we go to the public? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, and we have one speaker, Don Schmitz, for the applicant. Are there any Zoom speakers tonight?
There are no Zoom speakers.
Are there any other speakers on this item? Okay, you're alone, Don.
There have been no others that's turned in.
Sorry. Two small procedural things. One, Rick, I don't know if you identified yourself before you spoke, so could we have that put on the record?
Yes, I apologize for that. Yes, my name is Rick Caswell, contract planner for the city of Malibu.
Thank you. And then one other thing is we do have a presentation from Don here for anyone in the public that would like to look at it. It is available up with staff or from anyone up here. So that's available for the public record to review. Thank you.
Now you're on.
Chair Mazza, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the Sloan Family Trust. And to Kellen, the, the handout is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation I'm about to show you, which apparently, especially when Mr. Caswell is your planner, my staff needs to do a better job coordinating with because you've just seen a significant percentage of my presentation, and I don't want there to be any redundancy. I am excited to be here on this project because after several months, not several quarters, of dynamic hearings, I have one in front of you tonight that I'm hopeful, I might be able to get everybody's imprimor on it. And that's not by chance. We worked very hard. Yes, it's a, it's a minor remodel, it's a modest addition, but there were revisions and a lot of thought went into it to keep it within that category. Another thing I'm very excited about is we were able to find building permits. I about fell out of my chair when my staff came to me and said they were able to find the building permits from 1956. Normally, when you try to find those old building permits, if you go past the 70s, it's like trying to find the Dead Sea Scrolls, and you're lucky if you find a little microfiche with fly specks on it. But we actually have the building permits from 1956. And of course, we also have the coastal development permit and building permits for the 450-square-foot addition in 1980, which is the area that is highlighted right there, pre-cityhood. But it's good to know that everything that you see out there today is documented, fully permitted, fully legal. I have a suspicion that's not always the case in matters which were brought before this commission. So the project scope is, again, fairly minor. We're adding 338 square foot to a second-story addition, which is going to be a nice little lounge area, as you can see, highlighted right there. And then there's going to be a new exterior staircase to get up to said minor addition. There's a new 291-square-foot second-floor covered deck. I know how fond Commissioner Hill is of very large rooftop decks. This one, I think, is within keeping of what he would normally envision to be appropriate. It's just an area to flow out from the lounge, taking the view, probably with an adult beverage. And so we are also creating a 290-square-foot extension of the roof over the existing deck to create an additional loggia, and that is something that has been included in all the calculations as well. There is no new foundation work which is being proposed as a part of this application. It is less than a 50% remodel. Rick already did a fine job on addressing that, and that was very important to us to keep it on the simple side. We are raising the roof to create clear stories and to bring more light into the structure. Now, here's the view corridor, and that's the area that we were originally proposing to have that addition. And that's the 20-foot view corridor, which, as you can see, unless you're a seagull flying something like 30 feet above Pacific Coast Highway, the view corridor is required, doesn't really provide much of a view. So we were hoping that that would be okay, but it's not. Staff indicated that based upon LIP, section 6.5E2, that we have to maintain the view corridor that's not really there. But that's what we were required to do, so we then went and modified the plans to remove that portion of the house. So the plan revisions eliminates any second-story encroachment into the view corridor as required by the code. And that is what is before you tonight. This is the existing north elevation, and this is the proposed north elevation, which I thought was a very cool shot until Rick showed it to you already. I think it's a beautiful addition to a beautiful but very older, tired home that needs to bring more light into it and needs a facelift. And as you saw in the aerial photographs, what we are proposing is very much in keeping with what is in the neighborhood. I thought Commissioner Hill's comments were enlightening in regards to what those old photographs show and how, in fact, those beach lots were all built out, but they've all been built up pretty dramatically. This is one of the last houses, this 1956 house, which, which is still in its, in its current state. The string lines are non-issue. The building string line is, we were very concisely comporting with that. We're not extending out the deck at all. One should be cautious that the second-story deck also doesn't go out past the deck string line, and it gets nowhere near close to it. So we are fine as far as that LCP policy is concerned. And there are no changes to the onsite wastewater treatment system. We are actually eliminating some of the fixture counts. We have an operating permit for the property. Suffice it to say that the, the commodes in there, I think, are in fact circa 1956, and I think they probably use something like 10 to 15 gallons worth of water every time you flush them. So the whole house is going to have new fixtures in there, low, very low water usage. So it's going to represent a dramatic improvement, and we have the Health Department approval to that effect. Our calculations, and I believe elsewhere in the staff report, it says it's a 22% increase in the structure. I saw that Rick put in 28%. But either way, it is important, and I'm just going to reiterate this point, section 13.5E states that if you add more than 50% to a beach or bluff top house, you need to bring the entire project into compliance. And of course, with a forethought, we are well below that number because we don't want to lose the grandfathered invested position that we have. And so we are, in fact, in compliance with 13.5E. Taking that into account, everything that is being proposed is exactly consistent with the local coastal program, as reflected in the table in the staff report. The project does comply with the local coastal program, and I know you know this by rope, but I just want to reiterate the fact, that is, if I can say the word correctly. We received approval from everybody, environmental health, geology, public works, coastal engineering. We did analyze everything as it pertains to sea level rise, biology, Water District 29, and the Fire Department. So in conclusion, the existing residence predates the Coastal Act and cityhood and has valid permits, valid permits. If only all of my projects that are circa 50, 70 years, sometimes longer, I could get you all the documentation, my life would be a lot easier. The project scope is pretty minimal. It's a 22% addition, 917 square foot. That includes, by the way, the extension of the deck over that, that one, the extension of the roof over the deck on the southeastern side of the house, and a 41.5% remodel. So therefore, because of the addition is at 22%, it's well below the 50% threshold, which would require us to bring the entire property into compliance. There is no new development proposed within the view corridor, and the project complies with local coastal program and the municipal code. I never try to say Malibu municipal code because that is the only way I can say that altogether without blurring it, is very slowly. I would also point out that we have not two, but three letters of support. I can only hope that all of Commissioner Hill's questions got answered. There are no letters or speakers in opposition. That is fairly atypical for the proceedings here. And also atypical, I'm going to use only about half of my time. That concludes my presentation. If there's anything else you need me to address, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any Zoom speakers that popped up?
We do not.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing. I'm going to make a motion to approve the project as recommended. Are there any?
Second.
Okay, any, I just have one question, Don.
Chair?
Yes?
Can you just repeat that again so I can hear it correctly?
I think I, I guess I should come up with one.
I almost spit my water out on here.
The outside patio on the upstairs, on the new thing sticking out of the roof?
Yes, sir.
That's covered by the dark sky ordinance, is that, is that, I guess maybe you can answer it. Does that require that it shut off 10, 10 minutes after somebody uses it? Is that the way that works?
I believe that is reflected in the dark sky ordinance. I believe that in the resolution of approval, consistency with the dark sky ordinance is one of the conditions.
Okay. Can we have a vote unless there's any other comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Rick, this is actually two questions. It says the project is determined to not be a substantial improvement by the city's floodplain administrator. Who is that? Is that Lauren Doyle? And do they use the same 50% criteria that we're using? Or what, what, what is a substantial improvement according to a floodplain administrator?
So it's my understanding, I'm, I was getting that from the overall geo report, so I, my take on that is that it is Lauren Doyle, but I would defer to perhaps Tyler or one of the other senior planners to confirm that.
And, and then the criteria, it's not a substantial improvement? Is that, they're just applying the same criteria we would use for the 50%? Or is there a different something when you're, when you're looking at floodplain?
Well, let's, let's ask Tyler. He's the expert here. The surviving expert.
Definitely not an expert in geotechnical issues, but we, we can double-check if Lauren was the, the reviewing person on this one. She's, she oversees the group, so she probably, she might have had a role, but I don't want to say it was Lauren who, who made that determination.
Bigger question is, what, what criteria do they use to say it's not substantial?
So from my understanding with the Building Safety Division is that 50% is, is considered. So they do consult with us on what we consider a substantial remodel, and that is weighed into their analysis as well.
So they use the same criteria that?
I don't, it's, it's part of the criteria. Yes, the 50% is part. I don't want to say it's in whole.
So cities have options on who they can actually identify for this function, but the criterion is set by FEMA, page 2 of the 18, paragraph 3. The flood emergency management agency identifies a base flood elevation as 18 feet. And here we have a site that base elevation is above the 18 feet. So that's the FEMA criteria.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Do you think you could get it out of that garage when there's a bike lane in front of it?
I think all of the houses in East Malibu on Pacific Coast Highway have certain challenges in regards to entering and leaving onto PCH. However, we are not modifying the parking scenario for the property at all.
Okay, thank you. And we, any other questions? Do we get, we get a second? Scott, are you seconded? You did? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Can I stand here and just savor that for a moment? And unanimous vote? Thank you.
No, we got a rush. Yeah, remember, we got a rush. Okay, the next item is item 5C, which is coastal development permit number 21-064, site plan review number 21-035, and demolition permit number 24-035. An application for the remodel and addition of existing single-family residents and accessory units.
Excuse me, Chair. We are now on item number 5B.
B?
B, as in B.
Oh, I thought that was B. We need our binders back. Excuse my faux pas. Okay, excuse me, guys. Coastal Development, we're opening the hearing on item 5B, coastal development permit number 21-069, conditional use permit number 23-006, variance number 22-002, and 24-005, demolition permit number 22-003, an application by the County of Los Angeles to upgrade an existing pump station and related water infrastructure serving the Ensonal Canyon area location at 32805 Camino del Bueno Ventura and 425, 4525 Avenida de las Ensonal. Okay.
Quick, okay? Is this, is this the project you're talking about, Norm?
Sort of.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Tyler, are you in charge here on this one?
I am the planner on this one, yes.
Okay. Tell us about water tanks.
Yes. Thanks, Chair Mazza, again, members of the Planning Commission. So as you mentioned, it was, the proposed project for this one is an upgrade to the existing pump station and related water infrastructure in the Ensonal Canyon area. So this project, as mentioned, is in the Ensonal Canyon area. It is not located within an environmentally sensitive habitat area, nor is it in the appeal zone of the California Coastal Commission. However, this project is appealable because it is considered a major, major public works project. The county easement shown in the green here bifurcates the two private parcels in the rural residential zone, which are indicated in the purple. And as such, those, the county improvements cross the private property boundaries. The applicant is proposing two variances to cross such boundaries and encroach within those required setbacks for each parcel. The project includes the removal of existing 128-foot, square-foot pump station, the removal of existing piping and associated equipment, and removal of 75 linear feet of fencing. Construction-wise, there's a 330-square-foot, 16-foot-tall pump station that will replace the previous, new piping, a new generator and fuel tank, new electrical pumping equipment, and 75 feet of replacement eight-foot-tall fencing. There's four discretionary requests. The applicant is proposing a conditional use permit for a public utilities facility within the rural residential zones, and then two variances requests, as mentioned before, one for each side yard setback of the two private parcels, and then a demolition permit to demolish the existing infrastructure. Here's the existing and proposed site plan. The water tank actually remains on this one, but essentially all other infrastructure is being replaced or improved. The pump station building is replaced. There are going to be some new water mains throughout, and then they're going to add a generator and a fuel tank. The pump station building is going to be 15 and 1/2 feet tall. Here's some photos of the story poles that we took on-site. The project is expected to blend in with the surrounding environment. And then here's a visual from Ensonal Canyon Road. It's a little blurry there, but Ensonal Canyon Road is a LCP-indicated scenic road, and so all the conditions related to scenic impacts And so all the conditions related to scenic impacts are put on this project. And as shown here, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to have much of an impact on the existing conditions. So for the, for this one, we are recommending approval of the project as you see in the resolution. We're available for any questions, and we have members of the county here as well.
No questions? Oh, okay. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, we're going to open the hearing with Norm Haney representing the applicant and?
May we take disclosures first?
Oh, I am sorry. Excuse me, excuse me, you two. Can I have a disclosure, please?
None.
None, Greg?
None.
None? None, okay.
Applicant is here.
Oh, I thought this says you are the applicant.
Oh, I would, yeah, it was handed to me as though you were the heart of the applicant team. If that's not correct, then the applicant could come forward, please.
The applicant is the County of Los Angeles.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Catherine Sue, is that right? Sue? And then Norm, you have 15 minutes. We will ask you questions if, you know, if we need to. So you can save any time for rebuttal after Norm speaks if you want.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Mazza and members of the planning commission hearing. My name is Katrina Uzi, and I'm a project manager for the Los Angeles County Public Works. I'm managing Los Angeles County Waterworks District number 29's Lower Ensenal Pump Station Improvements Project. And I'm here with Los Angeles County Waterworks District Eduardo Magino, as well as the design consultant Duncan Lee, who are attending the meeting virtually to answer any of your questions. So yes, the pump station improvement project, as Tyler mentioned, will require removing the existing pump station building and constructing a new pump station building that will house the upgrades to the pump station, electrical upgrades, and a portable generator, and, and modification of any existing pipes. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna hold, you have 14 minutes to rebut. And now, Norm?
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this, this project. As you can tell from my previous conversation or comments, that I'm passionate about the protection of these 50-plus homes in Lower Ensenal Canyon. What they're proposing here is the improvement to a pump station. You know, I'm always an advocate of, when it comes to safety, leave what you have before you build something new, before you tear it down. With regard to this pump station, I'm 100% in favor of it because it's an improvement that's absolutely necessary. In terms of all of the water mains and conduits that are necessary, I would prefer that they leave the ones there and make them useful before they make the transfer over to the new ones. But as I said, I am much in favor of the pump station, the improvement for the pump station. It's necessary for the safety of this area. I just wish that they had the same philosophy when they decided to tear down the 70,000 gallon water tank before they constructed a new water tank. So for one to three years, the lower Ensenal Canyon area will have no water to fight fires. That was my concern when I made comments at the public comment. I think this project is a good one. You should approve it. I'm in favor of it, and I think it's necessary. Thank you very much for your time. I'm available with questions if you have any.
Thank you, Norm. Okay, we're going to close. Are there any Zoom callers?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for commissioner comments and questions. I do have a question, Ms. Sue. Can you come up to the podium, please? Are you, are you replacing all the lines on the, on the roads to the houses, then the houses connect to your lines? Or are the old lines staying in? Or is this just for the pump station?
Just for the pump station, it's just the, the pump station itself and then some of the lines that connect to the pump station. But is it possible to call on the design consultant to answer any questions? Who's attending the Zoom meeting?
And can you give us the name of the person that you're referencing?
Duncan Lee.
And Duncan, you can unmute to respond to that question.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity, commissioners. So regarding the pipeline, the pipeline is actually the, one of the first phase out of the three phase we were hired to work with this county. The pipe was actually all under construction for phase one and phase two. We're at the very tail end now of the phase two of the pipeline project. Prior to us joining the team, the county had already started designing about a model of pipeline, which replaced the main, the main distribution lines, also service laterals. We're now doing the same with other segments of older, older pipes. And that's already in construction.
Okay, thank you. And will that provide the 1,250 gallons per minute for the county requirements to build to these houses?
Well, I know that there was early when Mr. Norm was talking about the removal of tank. He might be referring to the Upper Ensenal Project, which is further, is a higher elevation zone. We're not taking out the Lower Ensenal Pump Station tank. It will be down just for a little bit for like, for cleaning and for some new connections. We want some fresh new connections to the old tank. So it'll be down for a little bit, but not for years. It'll be down for relatively short period of time for inspection, for connection and cleaning, and be back in service again.
Okay, one more question. And then my last question, then Drew's going to ask some, is we've always had a water supply problem on the east end of Malibu. Or the?
West end.
West end, I mean. Have you come across new water supplies? Or is this coming out of what's, what's existing? And will it reduce the amount of supplies available further west?
No, it will not have any because we're not upsizing pump station. We're not bringing new supplies. So for this particular pump station replacement, you know, rehab project. So no, it doesn't affect the westernly side. My understanding is that the water is fed from the east and working its ways towards west to various existing storage tanks and piping. None of those will be in touch on this particular, this particular project. This is just for the Ensenal area, the one branch that branches up to the existing pump station called La Chusa that pumps into the Lower Ensenal Tank. The Lower Ensenal Pump Station pumps to the Upper Ensenal Tank. So it doesn't, it doesn't change capacity, same size pumps.
Okay, so I'm worried not, I'm wondering about not the capacity. I'm wondering about this will increase the amount of water going to the Ensenal homes at the present time?
No, no, no. No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, Drew, you had a question?
I was just wondering if you could just be a little bit more specific in regards to how long the changeover would be.
Okay, there's a lot of different components in our plans that we're preparing for the county. We broke it into quite a bit of detailed phases, which we want the contractor, whoever wins the bid, to be conscious of, so they're not thinking, able to just to take the system down and work. We face everything, even the smallest detail of transferring the electrical building. And that's why in our plans, we're building a building around the old building because we need to keep things running as much as possible. So all of that allows us to keep the downtime, you know, reduce the downtime. Like, for example, by putting in a new building with a roof over the old building, all the equipment, electrical particularly and mechanical are protected. And then we're going to build a new electrical equipment while keeping the existing one in place. As Norm earlier mentioned, whenever we can, try to keep existing facility in operation. So the whole pump station is being designed that way in phases where we're building a parallel electrical. Then we can able to have the new electrical working so we can do a quick switch over. And then we can do the rest of the mechanical to get all the panels connected. And that's how we're facing the pump station with very low downtime. Did that help?
I was just trying to help for the general public.
Okay.
Something two months, you know?
Oh, the, 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 are you referring to the downtime of the tank?
Not the downtime of the tank, but? Where there might be sporadic interruptions or decreased availability.
Oh, I see, okay. Our understanding right now, the way we're planning it, if it goes per our planning, the tank during the, let's see, is down for a couple of weeks for the new inspection, the cleaning, the new outlets. There, it is tied to a pump station system that's feeding it assist all the time. And we're going to add another tank there, about a 5,000 gallon tank, that just lets the pump station be, that operate more stable, so it doesn't get on and off. We're going to bring in a portable generator as well. So therefore, now in the event, we need to make sure we have water to feed to the Upper Ensenal that generated, that provides the power to do so. So as the pump station are all going to be more redundant and operational before we touch any of the tank, the system is already more reliable with brand new pipes, with a new pump station before we touch the tanks. So did that answer your question there? So the downtime should minimalize a few weeks, but it's not going to have a downtime. It's just going to be, you won't have that existing 0.6 million gallon tank for a little bit, but you will have the pump station all functioning, working. And I can also add the Upper Ensenal Tank is connected to the Lower Ensenal system. So it protects that as well. So we're not?
That answers the, that basically answers the question.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry for the long, long round.
I was just going to try to convey to him the concern that people who live in the area had about, have about wired file protection. If he could just convey to them the project and how that affects that, if it affects it at all. It sounds like it was kind of clarified that it doesn't necessarily affect that, and it's been done in the most minimally invasive procedure. So I think the question is, can you assure us that that's not happening in a time of year where there's any down part to the system in our red flag season, which we're approaching now? I think that the, the hope is that any downtime for that would maybe be happening in the, you know, a brief part of, I guess I would say, the, the summer. Consult with the county's fire department on when that time should be.
Yeah, that's a very good point, too. I think the, the county staff, that was one of the primary objective, too. They wanted us to always think about these details, and your point well taken. I think because the, the pump station is being done in such an uninvasive manner, it is not going to be affected by season because we're not going to let the pump station go down at all. By the time we get done with the pump station, the generator is going to be there. So that's something they never had before, a portable generator with the ability to bring it on to connect. And then lastly, is that what we do with the tank, which is something we want to, like you said, put it in a season, not in a red flag season, but put it more in a season that the water demand is not as high. Because first, it's not going to be a super long duration, but it's not in a critical path where you have to do it in a certain rush manner. You can wait on that until you're ready to actually make that pipe connection during low demand and low fire risk season. So these are all the things that allows us to phase our work and not put us in jeopardy, which is something that we're very conscious of. Did I answer the question there?
Yeah, thank, thank you for clarifying that. I had, I had just one more question on understanding the backup system and the power for this.
Okay.
Is there a reason specifically why the water district or the county is using a trailer unit for backup power versus using something that's permanently there on site?
I see, okay. That's a very, I think, first of all, the pump station is being, okay, the portable generator is something that although you may need it when you need it, normally speaking, you won't really need it. And to leave a generator sitting out there is probably not the best use of that available resource because they do have so many pump station throughout the area. So if there was a loss in power, I think the county would like to reserve the ability to use their existing pool of generators and the newer they're going to buy for this and use where it's needed. Because otherwise, it's quite costly to maintain.
I understand where you're, how you're explaining the reasoning for that. Our residents have been super frustrated during some of these extravagant wildfire experiences that we have in Malibu, where those generators are not in place, and they're not in place in a timely manner. So I would urge you to, instead of using a portable generator, use a permanent generator for this location. Because it's, it's in a critical area, and to expect a truck to come from the water district with a generator and have the property people available to hook it up in the middle of night at 1:00 a.m. when the power goes out, and then there's a fire, is, I don't think we can expect that of the county. And at least we haven't been able to expect that in the past. So it's very hard for us to understand the reasoning, or hard for me at least, to understand the reasoning behind that, when here we've been told like, hey, we're going to get you guys these backup generators. We're going to get you guys these backup generators. But then it's really just a, a trailer unit that's brought in potentially when it's needed versus having an actual onsite backup generator where the power kicks on with an ATS anytime the power's out.
Skyler, one thing that came up on the prior Bush tank when we asked for that is that that requires servicing. You can't just leave a generator sitting there. And that was a problem with them, having, having to service all these different generators.
So the portable generator requires service, too. Now granted, you can, it requires the same amount of service.
But it's in, it's in a yard being serviced instead of somebody driving around. But again?
I understand, I'm just trying to achieve?
No, I understand, and I appreciate.
Resiliency for our community.
I appreciate what you're saying, but it is very important. It's, but it's, it's the county, not us. Greg?
Yeah, just to follow on that, then I have some other stuff. But two Thanksgivings ago, we had a huge red flag, and we had just gotten the three portable generators for Big Rock that were, the whole pitch was that they were dedicated for the pumps there so that we would have that water in the, in the red flag time. And at least one of those pumps was taken away because somebody deemed that it was needed more somewhere else. So I, I'm with Skyler on that. Is there some way that we could put some kind of condition in here that says that that generator will always be available in red flag season? Or how could we frame that?
We have, we have no way to enforce a county. It's a superior agency to us. So you can say, do this, do that.
Well, if we're, but we're approving a CDP here, so can we not condition that?
CDP is, is a development. Correct me if I'm wrong. CDP is for a development, not a service, okay? And so it's, we're very restricted on, we can, we can, we can say you got to build this, but we can't say you got to service this or show up.
So we could say we need a permanent generator.
Hold on, let me ask this of maybe Trevor or our city, or Marine.
Tyler?
Do, or sorry, Tyler, not Trevor. Have we permitted this before where we have a portable unit versus a ground mounted generator?
Yeah, we've, specifically for the Waterworks District, they've been proposing the, the on a trailer ones, and we haven't really had an issue with that. But the permanent solution, we've approved them multiple times for wireless facilities, let's say. So it's, to me, it's not like it's infeasible.
So as somebody that gets in a? So as somebody that gets and applies for those permits sometimes is outside of my role sitting here right now, um, I very much understand the service issue that's at question and the cost of having a service provider go to a said location in Malibu. And if we were to set this precedent, there would be multiple locations in Malibu. But I think if, the county should just very much, it's hard to hear them say we want, like when Public Works comes to the city after a fire and say, hey, we wanna really make your community more resilient and we want all these things to work. And then like the first example of it at Big Rock during that situation is a fail. And the reason why it's a fail is simply because those units are not permanent units. So I'm just making it out there. It's not gonna stop me from improving this. It's just more of a comment to the county of like, if you actually wanna do this right, that's how you do it.
That is, that is true. You also have to fuel them. And so how much fuel do you store and where do you store it? Then you go through a whole other thing. But okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve as recommended.
I have questions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Craig, what's your question?
Yeah, just to be clear, you've talked about some of the additional piping and so forth. I, I don't understand how far that goes. Does that affect any nearby residents in terms of access to their driveways? Are we cutting, cutting in the road anywhere?
Well, Craig, it's not part of this. That is a totally different CDP.
There, this project talks about new piping connecting to existing water lines.
They explained that they're already building that under a separate CDP.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking about this project, or just to clarify. This is not touching anybody else's property or crossing driveways, anything like that?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, so, okay, here's an observation that I think is important. Um, you know, technically it sounds great, but there's some significant liabilities on the, issues on the table here. The geotechnical remarks state that it remains the assessment of the city's geotechnical reviewers that the slope stability analyses performed are based on speculative and not fully substantiated information regarding the underlying landslide configuration, et cetera. Geotech's proposed solution is that the applicant sign and record an assumption of risk and release for the geotechnical hazards. Now, that would be good, but um, I don't think we can, there, there are third parties potentially affected that would not be participating in that agreement. We have potentially theoretically, we have houses up slope that could be undermined or down slope that could be flooded, power poles could be knocked over, starting fires. Uh, I mean, these are all, you know, remote possibilities, but if we're talking about liabilities, we need to see that everybody's covered. So I don't know how you solve that, what condition we could put in. But for example, we could get, require sign off by all owners within 500 feet. Or at minimum, you need to have sign up of the actual property owners on which these easements lie. The, the utility easement. Because Water Works' legal authority is constrained to the, the right of easement that they have over that property. But they can't, you, you're, you can't legally be signing off the rights of the underlying property holders. That, that is not a right. So in other words, your right of easement is conditional. Um, so I, I think somehow we have to take care of the, the immediate owners in some way. And if, if we're, if, if we're going to an assumption of risk and release because the geology is not solid, then, then other people have to participate.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How is this any different than a phone line, electric line? They're all on easements and PG&E is, or SCE is liable if they, if something goes wrong. They don't have to be liable for people 100 feet from them or 1,000 feet from them. They're liable. How would this change?
Well, if, okay, they're talking about a big water tank, they're talking about.
I know, but why, if they were liable for that facility, why, why would they, why would you need them to sign off on anything else? They're liable.
Why, why are we asking them to sign off on the assumption of risk or release in the first place? If, if, they're just, basically the city is saying, let's hold the city not liable.
Do you realize that every single CDP we do for the last 33 years has that provision in it?
Not, not the same one and not in this condition of expressed speculative, not fully substantiated stability.
Skylar?
Um, can I ask our city attorney a question?
Sure.
Uh, Kellen, are you comfortable with the language that's in there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
And can, can I ask the follow up question to that? Is why do we not have to take care of the adjoining and or underlying landholders?
Tyler has a comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to that and then I can follow up if there needs to be.
I just wanna assure you guys that um, when the, the assumption of risk is mostly because they're in a landslide area. It's not just like the geology department waives the review. Uh, in fact, the reason the water tank, the upper enzinal water tank has not been before you, or one of the biggest issues up there is, is geology. So similar to this project, they have to sign the assumption of risk and release, but geology has still not issued approval because they haven't met all the requirements. So just wanted to make sure you guys are aware, it's not a, it's not a waiving of the review from the geology department. They still have to meet the satisfaction. It's more so to do with the landslide conditions of the area.
Well, wait, hang on, in that case.
Excuse me a second, I wanna follow up on that. Are we waiving the 1.5 stability condition or is there a consideration to have another? Uh, or do we know what the stability factor is?
Off the triple check, that's part of what I'm saying is that, that review is still being conducted.
Well, so in effect, you're saying this has come to us prematurely yet because we haven't decided whether it's possible to do or not?
This project has met the geotechnical conditions with the assumption of risk requirement. Um, as I said, the upper enzinal tank has um, greater geological issues that they're still working out. So I'd have to go and confirm all the factors safety stuff. I don't have that for me right now. But um, just to let you guys know that geology is not waiving their review of this application.
So it's a permit process, it's not a CDP process.
So theoretically, geology could say, you know what? We've looked further at this not fully substantiated analysis and we think it's not safe to do, so we're not gonna, theoretically that could happen.
A subsequent review is done in the building plan check before a permit is issued, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, it's, yes.
So when you're in these conditions, there's, it's thrust blocking and there'll be, it's on the plans, they've thought through all this stuff, they'll take care of it. They're not gonna put the water, besides, it's a water district and nobody's gonna tell them what to do. And um, but they, they'll take the safeguards. But thrust blocking where they need to on, on any of the pertences that go into hydrants or any kind of connections or valves to make sure that those don't move. Um, it's all on the plans, it's all covered.
And we can rely, rely on the, the government just like the people of Palos Verdes?
They aren't the government, that is the water district and, and they're gonna do, they're gonna do that for sure.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm just saying that you could do the best you can, but somebody issued permits in, in Palos Verdes and they slid anyway. So um, parts of an act of God. Uh, are we ready for a vote? Okay, may we call a roll, please?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Abstain.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we are on item 5C.
20 minutes to spare.
We got 40 minutes to spare. Um. Item 5C, coastal development permit number 21-064, site plan review number 21-035, demolition permit number 24-035, an application to remodel in addition to an existing single family residence and accessory structures and demolition of the existing horse stable located at 23344 Palm Canyon Lane. May we have a staff report, please? Oh, I'm sorry, let's have disclosures first. Um, any disclosures?
Um, so I do have some disclosures. So my first disclosure is that I bid this job approximately a year ago for this applicant. Uh, it was a different set of plans and I did not get the job. I confirmed with the, the general contractor that I bid the job for that I, that they had not spoken to them since that, that they were not doing the job at this time. And I discussed that with this city attorney and it's not gonna affect the way that I vote on it. I'm looking at it completely openly. And at this point, I'm, that's it, thank you.
And if the job is rebid, will you bid?
Uh, if it came to me again and I, you're asking me to make a decision about something that's not in front of me right now.
You know, that's a question, city attorney. What do you mean, be included for?
It was, it was explained to me on the facts that we have today and I'm comfortable with his disclosure.
Okay, that's in the record. I have no disclosures, anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Um, I visited the site with the applicant. Um, Ms. Tang, she informed me that this was the third effort to remodel since, I think it was 2013, that there have been prior representations made about the site by past planning director Blue. Um, she, I was, had questions about the side yard setback and how it was measured. And she showed me that they were, Ms. Blue had allowed her to use a short diagonal, like we can get into the maps on this as necessary, allowing for a smaller setback than if the site were measured all the way across. Um, that there is a, I looked on the LCP map, there's a blue line stream that is, the map resolution isn't very good, but the, the map shows the blue line stream on the north side of the street. Um, but in reality, there's a culvert that brings the stream across to the south side and run, running south of the project within approximately five feet of the newly proposed construction. Um, I asked Planner Brooks in email for clarification about these several apparent irregularities and um, the answer, the first answer I got was that the prior commission had decided these, these things already. So they were basically locked into the parcel. Um, and I said, well, if, if so, then we should have the documentation in front of us, whether it's a link to the video of those deliberations or um, and, and, and maybe if they made sense, I'd agree. Um, but, and then at four o'clock today, she sent me the staff report and the minutes of the 2015 planning commission hearing on this project. Um, on, on that staff report, I saw that the garage structure was then ratified as habitable space, which is in fact what, part of what that 2015 application was for, to call that habitable. Um, also this, weirdly, the staff report and the resolution from 2015 make no mention of the side yard setbacks nor how they were calculated. I don't see them depicted on the plans, let alone how they were calculated. Um, so apparently what I take from this is that the side yard setbacks have not been previously formally adopted. Um, and just trying to look at, I guess that's it by way of disclosures and I'll have some comments.
Good. None.
None. Buddy? Your honor.
All right, good evening Chair Mazza and members of the planning commission. Um, depicted here is the project site, which is a long, narrow, irregularly shaped parcel located at the Sarah Retreat neighborhood, just inside of the city limits. The lot size is approximately three acres in size and is currently developed with a two-story single family residence, a detached two-story garage and equestrian improvements. This aerial map shows the mapped blue line stream, which was analyzed under a previously approved CDP for this property. The staff report for CDP number 14-034, which was approved by the planning commission in September 2015, um, indicated that it was during the development of the surrounding parcels where the map stream was redirected onto the project site and that the map stream is not considered ESHA, but it is actually a, a drainage course that carries stormwater. Um, accordingly, the planning commission determined that the ESHA development standards did not apply to this project. Um, and that determination was concurred by both the previous and the current city biologists. Although the map stream was determined not to be ESHA, but rather a drainage course, staff is processing this application as appealable development to the coastal commission, which is consistent with how this application was processed before in 2015. And lastly, the site is home to several native trees, including coastlife oaks and sycamores, all of which would be protected with the implementation of several project conditions. And here, depicted here is the stormwater drainage course. Depicted here is a stormwater drainage course, which I just learned right before this item started. It's actually mapped on the survey, which is listed as a drainage easement. I literally just learned that like five minutes before this item. Um, so I will direct you to the project plans, which includes that survey, which identifies the storm drainage easement. The scope of work for this CDP includes the remodel of the existing two-story residence, first and second floor additions to the existing detached garage, construction of a detached two-story pool cabana, and the demolition of an existing horse stable. And for this project's scope, two discretionary requests are required. Um, the first of which is a site plan review for construction above 18 feet in height and demolition of the horse stable. Depicted here is the overall site plan showing the configuration of the project site. Um, circled in the red dash area is where the proposed improvements are located. And depicted here is an overall site plan, again, just a closer view of where the proposed improvements are. Depicted here are the proposed site plan, excuse me, the proposed floor plans showing the one and two-story additions to the development. The next couple of slides include project elevations. Um, these are elevations of the existing residence and the proposed two-story addition to the garage. And depicted here are elevations for the new proposed pool cabana. And the next couple of slides include story pole reflections of the proposed massing of the improvements, the first of which is for the two, first and second story additions to the garage. And nestled in all this landscaping is where the proposed pool cabana is located. Depicted here are the existing non-conforming hedges along Palm Canyon, which screen the existing and the proposed improvements from public views. Since the staff report was published, staff did receive correspondence that are kind of grouped into three categories. Um, the first of which is regarding the mapped blue line stream as potential ESHA. As previously discussed, the planning commission previously approved CDP, um, the CDP with the determination that the ESHA development standards do not apply. Um, there have been no, no changes to the existing site conditions that would warrant us to revisit this determination. And I'd like to also note that the California Coastal Commission did not comment on this issue for the previous CDP nor the current CDP before you tonight. The next concern raised was regarding the setback determination for this irregularly shaped lot, um, where, you know, there were some concerns about how that was done. Um, and again, that determination was made by the previous planning director, which was approved by the planning commission. And, you know, in general, once an entitlement is issued for, for development, um, staff honors any previous determinations made for a project, um, with the exception of, you know, any changes to the site conditions or if there's any new or modified developments. standards would affect, that would affect how the planning department reaches determinations on, on the development's conformance. And lastly, there was a concern about the proposed accessory uses as potential second units or guest houses. And again, the project's scope does not propose a second unit, and the project currently has a condition that requires the recordation of a deed restriction. And that deed restriction would prohibit the conversion of the pool cabana to habitable square footage. To address this issue, staff is recommending that that condition is condition number 95 in your draft resolution, that that condition be modified to extend the prohibition for that conversion of habitable square footage, to extend that to the proposed second-story addition to the garage. So again, it would cover both the pool cabana, and I think it's like a gym or something that's proposed above the garage. And I have some language here that, on this, on another slide, that would show the, the changes to that condition. And in conclusion, the Planning Commission has the authority to impose whatever condition it sees fit that would address the issue related to the accessory uses. And since the staff report was published, staff noticed there was an error, where although there was a lot of discussion about the site being located in the flood hazard area, when we got down to making the findings, specifically the hazard findings, there was some boilerplate language that says there's no hazards that affect the site, which is not the case. It's actually located in a flood hazard area. So I basically modify finding D1 in your draft resolution. These are the edits here, again, the red underline are the new tweaks that I made to that, to that finding, which basically acknowledges the fact that the property is located within a flood hazard area. Oh, what did I do? Did I do something? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just pressing a button. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Park is on it. And, and so regarding the deed restriction, staff is recommending that we modify condition number 95, and this again is related to the, the prohibition of the conversion of the second-story addition and the pool cabana to habitable square footage. And this deed restriction would run with the land unless otherwise done, removed by the Planning Commission. And that does conclude my presentation. In conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt your resolution number 24-48 to approve the subject CDP, and I am available for any questions.
Okay, I have one, one question before we open the public hearing, and that is, I've driven by there many times, and there's now a, as you depicted in your slides, a large hedge along the whole property that was not there in the prior CDP. So is this project going to be required to correct the 40, the 42-inch requirement of front, front hedges?
I mean, if that's what the Planning Commission decides, we could add a condition. I'm not aware-
Well, my question is, why would we need a condition, since it's already conditioned?
What's already conditioned?
This property. It's, it's a violation, not a new-
Oh, you know what? I was not aware of that. I think I do have the previously approved I don't believe there was landscaping proposed with the last CDP.
No, I'm talking about front fence, a hedge as a fence.
Right, but that would be in a landscaping condition. So are you saying that because-
It would be in the fencing condition. It's standard on all CDPs.
Correct. I just was not aware that the hedge, as it currently exists on the site, is unpermitted. I was not aware of that.
Oh, okay. Well, you are now.
Yes, I am now. So like I said, if the Planning Commission decides, we can-
No, that's what I'm asking you. Now, there's the difference between us deciding and code enforcement enforcing. There's a condition in, in the LIP and the municipal code that when somebody comes for a new permit, they are required to work with sta, the quote is "work with staff to correct prior conditions." So I don't think we need a, I just want to make that, you aware of that, and staff aware of that, because it's a rather huge hedge. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Unless anybody else has any questions. Did we do disclosures? We did, yes. Open the public hearing, and we have Jeanette Tang. You have 15 minutes. Are there any, any speakers on Zoom?
Here's one raised hand.
So you, you can reserve any time you want for rebuttal.
Yeah, I am just here-
And for clarification, the raised hand is from Doug Birch.
Oh, okay, then, you can't.
I, yes, I'm here as Vice President for Birch Architects. Some of you guys know me. I have worked on this project, this specific address, for many, many years. This is now my third client on the same address. Renika's already done the presentation. We don't have another presentation to give. We just wanted to let you guys know that both me and Doug on Zoom is available for any questions you have for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Hearing is closed.
Are there no public speakers?
No public speakers.
Doug had his hand up?
Excuse me, Doug does have his hand up, so he could speak at this time.
I'm sorry, what?
Doug Birch does have his hand raised, and he is part of the applicant-
We have to reopen the hearing. We are reopening the hearing. Start the clock. You, when you are on a team, you have to be in the 15 minutes. So that's why we closed the hearing, because we thought we had to. Doug?
Yes, hello, Commissioner Mazza. How are you?
Fine.
Yes, I just wanted to add that, yes, this is our third client on the same property. Also, to make a note, the hedge that you referred to was put in by a prior client, that I think the last one. And our client is currently in Europe, and he's wished he could be at this hearing. We appreciate everything Renika's been doing, very difficult addition and remodel on this project, and certainly available to ask any questions. We've been at this for a few years now, and I look forward to getting a good outcome. So thank you.
Okay, my question to you is, since your prior client put in the hedge, are you going to remove it? Or make it legal? Yes?
Again, the condition, if, if this is the Planning Commission, then we will do everything the Planning Commission asks us to do.
Well, as I explained before, okay, we'll close the hearing. As I explained before, it's not our job to do that. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to, to approve as staff recommendations with condition 95 modified to cover the pool cabana and the garage unit, and modification of language and finding D1 as Renika showed us. Do I have a second?
I've got lots of questions.
I'll second it for discussion. Are you addressing the hedge?
Well-
Or are you just leaving it for code enforcement, to deal with in a landscape plan?
We can, we can put it in here. It's not required, because it's required.
Put it in there.
Okay, then, then the hedge should be made compliant with-
I'm only, I'm just saying that in response to the heads nodding that I see. Just want to clarify it to make it simpler.
Okay, I'll, I'll modify the, the amendment, the motion to require that be prior to certificate of occupancy, the fencing requirements, front and side yard are of the, the municipal code is met.
A CFO won't be issued, because these are improvements to an existing single-family residence.
I'm sorry, what?
Chair?
Yes?
So what she's saying is that a CFO will not be issued on this, because it's essentially a remodel. My one suggestion, if you would like to get compliance with this, is that you require that before you commence construction, that you deal with this issue, and that upon finishing construction, your final inspection, you assure that the condition is met and maintained.
Amended, amended condition accepted. How's that?
Seems fine.
Okay, now Craig has some questions, and then we'll vote.
Yeah, okay. So we have this condition 95 about not allowing anything to be converted to habitable. I have a problem with that, because no conversion is necessary. It, both the above garage and the proposed cabana are habitable. The above garage was approved as habitable. That was the whole point of the 2015 hearing, or not the whole point, but it was, it was a point of it. And the cabana is, it's, however you want to label it, it's 2,434 square feet. It's basically three bedrooms, however you want to divide it. It's got three bathrooms with a grand total of six sinks, plus a so-called laundry room that is effectively a closet, or could be a closet. You don't need that as a laundry room, because you have a laundry room in the other structure, and probably in the house, too. And in terms of storage, you've got, also, the floor plan shows cabinets by the bar sink. It's also wired for 220 volts with the washer dryer, so it would be trivial to convert that kitchen, the bar, into a kitchen. But even without a kitchen, it's still a guest house. So you've got, you've got two accessory dwelling units.
I got you. Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Can we change the word to may not be habitated?
What?
In other words, in other words, we can't use it as a, as a residence, okay? You're, you're saying it's already-
It's already, I, I could live in it. My whole family could live in it.
So all that needs to be done to fix this is not define it as habitable, say it may not be inhabited.
How do you enforce that?
How do you enforce the fact that it's, it's 10 feet high or 20 feet high? You enforce it.
I think it's very difficult us to try to enforce something that I think is uninforceable, but I just have a question for Renika, which is, what is the reasoning for that language in there? Is that simply because it's these separate structures?
Yes, it's a standard condition that planning staff adds for accessory uses to prevent the use of those as a second unit or a guest house. It's really also about wastewater flow as well, because the Environmental Health Administrator approved this as a pool cabana, not as a self-contained ADU or something.
So can I ask the city attorney, what can we put in the resolution to make sure it's not inhabited?
You identified the issue with it. I think your tweak was great, and enforcement is the tough part of any of the things we do.
Well, that's true of everything we do, though, right?
That's, yes. So I think the tweak you gave is the best you can do to try to alleviate-
Do you accept that tweak, Skylar?
You're going to use the word uninhabitable?
Well, not uninhabitable, may not be habitable, may not be habit-
May not be habitated?
Yeah.
What involves use as a second unit and/or guest house, just making it clear.
Essentially, what we're, we're doing is saying, yeah, we, you can go ahead and build it, but you can't use it?
Can't live in it.
Can't live in it.
No, it's a cabana. You can go, you know, uh-
So you can use it, but you can't live in it? Like, you can't spend the night in it?
No, no short term.
No human shall remain for more than 24 hours in this. I just, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm confused with what the language is. I think that what we should do is use the language that's regularly used. I don't think we should try to reinvent the wheel here.
But, but, but there is no regular use of language for a 2,400-square-foot guest house when we only allow 900-square-foot guest houses.
Not a guest house.
It's got three bathrooms, it's got, it's got storage. It qualifies to, by the definition, in every regard.
That may, that may be true, but the language in there that says you can't sleep in it or use it like that, end of story.
Yes, it does.
Well, that's what, the language he's trying to put in, but it doesn't say that yet. It says you can't convert it to habitable, but I'm saying, the way it's configured, it's already habitable.
Why, why can't we just solve this with, you can't live in it, you know, that language?
Chair, I think I can craft the language.
Let's, let the attorney give it to you.
Yeah, that's one thing I'm good at. Could you read the condition? I'll see, one, we'll see if we like it, and then what we can add to it, if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, can I get my PowerPoint back in?
Then I think I can just throw in a few words that will, hopefully, and then you guys can decide if you like it or not.
Thank you. This is it.
I'm going to keep us past 10:30.
Huh?
So the current language is the pool cabana, neither the second-story garage addition or the pool cabana be converted into habitable space at any time in the future, comma, including as a, I think, as a, what was the language that we were suggesting?
Excuse me, Craig's problem was, he's saying you can't convert something that's already converted, so can, could you, wait, could you say can be, cannot be converted or used as?
Oh, sorry.
And then that would cover it, wouldn't it?
Yes, that would be fine.
Is that good with you, Skylar?
It's good with our city attorney. It's good with me.
Okay, so that's part of the motion. You got something?
Next, yeah.
May I ask Assistant City Attorney Marts to restate that language, please?
I'm going to defer to the chair on how he said that.
Cannot be converted into habitable space or used as habitable space in the future. Okay.
Cannot be converted at any time or used as habitable space in the future, towards, at the end of that sentence.
What else you got, Craig?
Okay, let's talk about side yard setback. This site is weird, and, and admittedly, talking with the applicant, and I'm sure Planner Brooks would agree, to get any kind of reasonable interpretation of how this applies, you sort of have to forget the, the whole limb of the property that extends down to the south, right? Renika, you, you with me on that? We just kind of have to, like, that's just-
It's a personal.
It's, it's, yeah, like, it's, there's no way this makes sense if you include that. But, so, I guess my first question is, this was not included or, or demonstrated in any way in the 2015 proposal. I, I looked at the, the report you sent me. Do we have any exhibit that shows how the side yard setback was calculated? Because I, I want to talk about the methodology in the planning interpretation manual.
Yes, and I had the same question, and the city did process, I think, two or three pre-application requests, but there weren't any diagrams that showed what that was. But this is the same architect that served on the property for, I guess, under three different owners. She did send me a diagram that was used during the consultation with one of our previous planning directors, which is consistent with the site plan that's attached to your staff report for tonight.
Okay, could, could we get a, a map of the site? I guess we don't, if we have a more detailed plan that just shows the housing site, we don't need the whole leg that extends. Can we get that on screen, please?
Can you pull up T 2.2?
Yeah, that's perfect. T 2.2.
Yeah.
It's in the, the PDF of the plans, so I don't know what, what page that is of the staff report, but it, the sheet would be drawing T 2.2.
I'll just, I guess I'll just wait till that comes up. Or maybe I'll start talking. Okay, so the, the way, the way we're supposed to, according to the planning interpretation manual, to calculate the, the yard setbacks is, you first draw the front-to-rear line in the middle of the property, from the street, perpendicular to the street, and in this case, that line would, and we'll see it on the map in a second, that would, line would come up roughly through the house and/or the garage, somewhere in, maybe between them, approximately there. It could, I mean, this piece comes out further this way, so it might be here. It's somewhere in, in the garage or the main house. So you get that line, and then, to get the side yard setbacks, you find the point, the midpoint of that line, and extend a perpendicular line, in this case, more or less the east-west line. We still don't have the map. This would help with the map. And you extend that perpendicular line, and in this case, that line would run more or less the length of the parcel. Now, there might be some, there's some ragged edges on the end of the parcel, so it's hard to clear. Skylar's drawing it. He's getting it. And we'll get the map up here. There you go. You got it there? No?
That's 2.1. It might be a little easier to show it on that, because you can see the whole parcel.
Go. No, yeah, 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 yeah. Go, no, yeah, 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 there you...
I'll go down. One more, one more.
One more.
Okay, that's good, all right. Now, what, what we're seeing, what we're not seeing here is there's still some parcel to the right side here, right? That's kind of off the map, but, so if you, the methodology is you draw the center line first from front to rear, and that would come up probably through the main house, given that there's more parcel on the, to the right. And then, on this map, that line would be pretty much vertical, right? That would be, this would be straight up, which means that the side yard line, which is to be drawn from the midpoint of that line, would be pretty much horizontal, and gets us across a big, big bit of the, the parcel there. And it would extend approximately 300 feet. Now, what I was shown by the applicant, do you see that over on the very left side, there's a bit of an angled piece there? The, the sidewall return, as it were? For some reason, she said that Bonnie's representation is that they could take a, a point from the midpoint in that angled line, and draw a perpendicular line across the parcel, which would get us to really only about the front rear line between the main house and the garage. Okay, are we visualizing that? Do I need to have a pointer? And that's, that's maybe 150 feet or 200 feet-ish, depending on, so in other words, to get to the point here, they have a side yard setback on the left side of this map that's a shade under 20 feet, when, if you drew the line correctly by the formula we use, and you'd get a whole side yard, side to side, about 300 feet, that would leave you with about a 30-foot required setback on that side. So the setback is too close to the, to the, to the fence. Now, what we were told is that Bonnie made this determination previously, that she could use this alternative methodology somehow, but I don't see that in any record. I don't see that as part of the, what the previous planning commission voted on, unless, unless you have some other...
Chair?
Yeah.
Or Craig?
Yeah.
Could, maybe we could ask our applicant if either Jeanette or Doug has any information on that, to see how this was, how you came up with this.
Good idea.
Well, to clarify also, you know, we had, the staff report gives us a lot width and a lot depth that we came up with way back, but also want to point out that this project, before I even came to our office, went through this process with Lester Tobias, and those same measurements for lot depth and lot width was also in his report. So it's, you know, we, we inheriting this over and over again, and we're just sticking to what's already been in the previous staff report.
Question, do you, do you know what year Lester saw this?
I want to say 2011?
Because the, the staff interpretation, the methodology we have for the side yard setbacks is 2005, so... Lester might have started before 2005.
No, no, he might have started on the, worked on the project, then.
Yeah.
Right, so I guess my point is that we already would have had this methodology.
Yeah, we, we're inheriting somebody else's, you know, determinations, and that's kind of what we just kept going with.
That's the answer, it was inherited, the, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
The, the point we should all remember, and then I'll call on you, is that number one, somebody's interpretation is always changeable, and the interpretation manual is made to be followed, and that's why it exists. So without other evidence, hearsay doesn't really count much. Now, Skylar wanted to speak.
Wait, I'm sorry, your point is what?
My point is that most of what I've heard is hearsay. In fact, all of it is, unless it's in writing, when we have an interpretation manual.
Most of what you've heard from the applicant, or from me, or...
From everybody, as far as anything that differs than what you use the interpretation manual for. It's, oh, someone so told me that I could do it that way.
Right.
But that's not, we, when we do the interpretation manual, that's why we do it. So we don't get that. So Skylar, did you have a question?
Well, I just kind of had sort of the general comment, I guess it's sort of already been said, but just like, this is a super awkwardly designed parcel. And if the testimony here before us, and yes, you could say it's coming from the applicant, so you know, whether that's true or not, we don't know, like, I feel like our staff is kind of comfortable with how this has been proposed to this point, and it's definitely like, gone on some like lineage of, through different architects that have used a very similar reasoning is what's been presented to us. Those are two architects that do a lot of extensive work in our community. I think that we should feel comfortable with that, like, assessment of where this is at right now. I may disagree with it a little bit myself, but that's kind of like what's in front of us, and I don't think that we can do something that's like a complete 180 in a different direction. I'll leave that's fair to the residents in our community. That's it.
Yeah, and that's...
That's why I'm saying, always try to be consistent, follow, follow interpretations that the staff develops. But I don't, what I haven't seen, and what, what you were saying is, we have no interpretation other than this is the way it is. We don't have how it got that way, okay? So Craig has a point. Now, the, the point is, how much havoc does it cause? And, and what's the solution if, if we decide to do a solution and do it the standard way, like you call it? Do you have, do you, what is, Craig, can you tell us, or should I ask Renika what the change would be?
Well, the change would be that you would, to maintain the standard interpretation of the setback, you'd, it would be 30 feet-ish rather than the, yeah. Yeah, and that would entail decreasing the size of this already, to my mind, well-oversized cabana. So to, I don't, I don't know, there would be, you know...
How much would it decrease it?
Well, if you pulled the...
Do you change its shape, or it just decreased?
You'd cut 10 feet off of one side. So I, I don't, I, you know, I don't think it's on us to redesign this, so, I don't know, what, I'm not sure what your, your question is. Is there violation?
No, my question is, what's the, what's the conclusion we're gonna make? And that is, do we deny the project because the, the setback is incorrect? Or do we require them to follow a new setback and take 10 feet off? Or what is the pleasure of the commission?
Well, I would have liked to have seen a, a setback determination done on a map by the standard procedure in the interpretation manual, to actually see that graph and see, here's the X, and here's the Y, and, you know, here's what we get. Without that, I feel like, as John said, we're just kind of basing it on hearsay.
Does the planning director have any comments?
I'm very comfortable with this interpretation, and the consistency is something very important.
You're uncomfortable with the way it's done in this plan?
Correct, that it's followed through to approval cycles.
But we, we don't have documentation of that. We don't know that.
We, we do know, the old plan was similar to this plan. We have testimony in front of us that prior architects have used this formula and carried it over, so...
We, we have no documentation that any side yard setback analysis was previously done.
Something happened, something happened.
The applicant's raising their hand on that, but, I mean, I don't think that you just came up with like, I don't think that Burgess' office would come up with 13 feet, one and a quarter inches, like, and just pull that number out of the air. Like, that, they wouldn't do that. So if, maybe Jeanette or Doug on the phone could just attest to that.
I just want to, I just want to say that you're saying that there is no previous, all the, the previous plans that we had approved by the previous two clients had on their cover sheet, you know, the standard little note we have where it says, you know, required setback, proposed setback, and existing setback, and those numbers have been stamped and approved previously. We have not changed those numbers at all. They're the same numbers as was approved in 2015, that was on the cover sheet then.
When I went through the 2015 this afternoon, I, I did a keyword search on setback, and there was discussion and analysis of the front-to-rear setback, because that was, you were talking about expanding the garage or something at the time, but there was no discussion or analysis of the side yards.
This is only question and answer, by the way. Drew, you're on.
Can we make a condition that, I guess you call it the quality control, before the permit gets released, of verifying the previous approvals, that this is consistency? We can't make that a condition?
This is, the, the purpose of this entitlement process is to fix at this stage consistency with the code. Now, you have probably the most irregular site in, in the city. I doubt anything else, looks like a shriveled up llama being bent in half somewhere. It's very reasonable to me as the director that the street was the front entry, and that setback was established on that basis.
Front yard setback to priority, probably.
That's just the way I would have approached it, so it's, it's inconsistent to that logic, because you have a home on the property.
No, exactly, and that, but that analysis is not followed through to then to figure out what the side yard would be based on that.
Yeah, the, the problem is, is that if you follow that analysis, that then the side yard is different as what Craig is saying.
Yeah.
So that's what the, that's here and where the issue is.
I mean, one, one, following Drew's thought, maybe it's a continuance to say, let's get it analyzed by the methodology.
So, does anybody, do we want to have a... We can continue the hearing and have them come back with an analysis, or we can end it tonight, and the question is how, how... This obviously, in my opinion, is not precedent-setting, because it's such a weird lot. If it were any other lot, I'd say, I, I would never believe, and I hate to knock architects, but she told me I could do it, is not, not a, a good excuse, okay?
Straw vote?
So you want to do a straw vote on whether we want to continue it or not?
I have one more big issue to address. I don't know if I do that now or wait.
Well, let's do it.
Do it now? All right, so...
I, I would be leaning towards approving this, and I would like to hear what the other issue is. That's where I'm at.
Okay, well, let's do it, Craig, we got it.
Yeah, so, so the question is, can we, and maybe this is a legal question, maybe, Kellen, this might be for you, can, can we ever remove a blue line stream from blue line stream status?
The blue line is not established by the city, so, no.
No, okay, because, I mean, I guess the gray area here is that there is this stream, this water course that comes down off the mountain, and it's shown on the map, and as Renika pointed out, and actually as was cited, it, it, it's been redirected, how did she say it? It's been redirected...
That stream was redirected when the property across the street was, at two properties across the street were developed in the course of the 80s into the 90s.
But, there's an easement. So it was legally redirected.
Correct.
So it is legally a blue line stream.
And, and, and then maybe the question is, another part of the question is, well, A, the LCP map is 2002, and it was called blue line then, so it is a blue line stream to some point, but then the question is, can you have a blue line stream that's blue line on the north side of the street, crosses through a concrete culvert into a more channelized four-foot-deep, eight-foot-wide-plus thing, and it's suddenly no longer blue?
Yes.
Really?
I'll give you an example.
Really?
Yes.
Doesn't, isn't it, once it's blue, it's blue to the ocean, right?
Nope.
No?
Point Dume. Okay? The blue line stream, the, the blue line stream on the property up for the housing element redevelopment, ends at Coast Highway, goes under a Coast Highway and disappears, even though it's blue on every map ever made.
That's, is that not a unique situation, because the way you, the city decided to handle Point Dume is kind of a separate province?
The answer is...
We, we don't have, we don't have that separate province status.
The other answer is, blue line streams are established by the US government, not by Malibu or the Coastal Commission, okay?
Can I ask a question of Renika?
That, that supports what I'm saying.
The home that's there, when was it built? Wasn't it built in the 2000s?
I don't know, Jeanette, Jeanette, do you know that information, when it was originally built?
Do you know when that home was originally built? I think it was built by a lawyer that lives in town.
Dave Bowman, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, Dave didn't build it, that house has been...
He was remodeled.
That, that house has been there since the Adams', it's been there since the 30s.
Is Doug...
But it was a dinky, dinky house.
Doug, do you know when that house was originally built?
And Doug, you should be able to unmute now.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't have that exact date. I know that we were asked for that research, right, because we, like I said, Lester was the architect before us, and I, it's been around for a long time, and they, and I, we looked at old maps and stuff. I don't have the exact date, but it was, I think, prior to cityhood, so...
And then, subsequent to cityhood, was the garage or any of that other structures on there built, or remodeled, or enlarged?
Yeah, the detached garage is a recent project. Jeanette has the actual dates on all of different projects. One was just a remodel, the other was adding the garage, because we converted a garage that was in the house, and then the detached garage was added.
And that all happened...
And that was the last applicant.
That all happened post 2001, 2002?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I'm just, the, the issue that's being brought up about the stream, I think, is kind of a moot point, because otherwise then, those other things wouldn't have been allowed to be done. And they were clearly allowed to be done, so I just think the precedent...
Yes, it was all brought up then, and, and this is what the issue is, is that it's a non-issue. We've been through this, so many applications, and with so many planners and planning directors and biologists, and they're all agreeing to the same point, including Courtney, to the current point. So that's why we, we, we thought this would be an issue, and then we asked all the experts and everyone in the city over the years, for 15 years, and this is the same conclusion.
Thank you.
1977, sorry.
Uh-huh.
So 1977, so that would mean that the house was built post-Coastal Act, but you'd know if it was a blue line stream or not?
I think, I think...
Nothing to do with it, okay, never mind.
There was that?
Thank you.
Is that it, Craig?
Thank you, Doug.
Can we call a question?
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to repeat the, you have, Rebecca, you have all the provisions, correct?
I believe so. Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
It's not 10:30, can we do another item?
We don't have one. We're very efficient, we got them all done.
I can come up with another one.
But I don't know if we can do 31 in three meetings. They are adjourned.